Position number six. As the public may be aware, those of you who are watching tonight, we put a request for applications out in, I believe, December, early January, in which we received several applicants with completed applications. And we went through a process by which we interviewed each of the candidates who stood for the appointment. And now tonight is the process by which the city council will conduct a public vote through a round robin process by which we, we understand or hope if the math is correct, that will lead to the identification of the selected candidate to fill position six. So just to explain process a bit tonight, and then we'll get started. We will have approximately three or four rounds of voting. This is a process which we have used previously to select a council candidate to fill an unexpired term. There are eight candidates still under consideration. After review of all the submittals and the interviews and those who submitted themselves for interviews, the council will narrow tonight one successful candidate through a round selection voting process as follows. Round one, each council member shall identify by vote a top four of the eight candidates. There shall be no more than one vote per candidate on this list by any individual council member. So it's not like having your, your sticky, you know, stars where you can put two votes on one candidate. You have to vote for no more than one vote per candidate. Upon completion of all those votes, the top four or more in the event of ties at the top become the list for round two. Round two, each council member shall identify by vote a top three from the list resulting from round one. There shall be, again, no more than one vote per candidate on this list by any individual council member. And then upon completion of all the votes tallied by our city clerk, the top two or more in the event of ties at the top become the list for consideration in round three. In round three, the council member shall identify by vote a top two of their preference. Again, there shall be no more than one vote per candidate on this list by any individual council member. Upon completion of those votes and a tally by our city clerk, the top two or more in the event of ties at the top become the list for the final round in which each council member shall identify by vote a top candidate from the final list. And upon completion of those votes, the top candidate should be at that point selected. So the council members will be called upon to identify their top candidates as they would be for any roll call vote. The clerk has random orders that are used for this purpose and would use or should use or will use a fresh round order for each of these rounds. So in the event the process doesn't yield the desired results, or if the results become obvious earlier than anticipated by the process through four rounds, a council member can make whatever motion they deem appropriate. And upon a proper second, the motion and subsequent action shall be governed by Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure. So at this time, before we go through this process, are there any questions by members of the council on the process by which we will proceed tonight? Okay, seen none. Madam Clerk, if you would post the names and your fancy Excel spreadsheet. And as I understand it, we are going alphabetically. And again, by roll call vote, we will count on, we will call on Councilmember Anderson to register his first four votes, which will be logged in by the city clerk, and then we'll proceed to council members Bell, Bokey, Branstadter, and et cetera. Moss, and then Whelan.
I have a question on the procedure since we indicated we were going to do like we did before, and that's different. We, last time we randomized so we didn't hold the same order.
Oh, we can certainly switch.
And we only did
Yep.
one at a time instead of all four, I believe, but I'm not sure on that.
I think we voted all of our candidates
We all did our four.
Yeah.
And then in order, but the second round was, we were in a different.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Anderson. So what we'll do is then we'll switch from you to start on round one. We'll start with Councilmember Bell for round two, Bokey for round three, and Branstadter for round four. Good point. If that makes sense to the council. So round one, we'll start with Councilmember Anderson. We'll go around to the four votes. There'll be a tally. Then round two, as announced by the city clerk, we'll start a new vote with Councilmember Bell to start, and then we'll proceed from there.
I, I cast my votes for Todd Wolf, Preston Lauracella, Amanda Quintana, and Charles Ames.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I cast my votes for Charles Ames, Laria Brown, Tristan Lauracella, and Todd Wolf.
Councilmember Bokey.
I cast my votes for Sean Hill, Preston Lauracella, Christina Minetti, and Todd Wolf.
Councilmember Branstadter.
I cast my votes for Laria Brown, Preston Lauracella, Christina Minetti, and Amanda Quintana.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
I cast my vote for Laria Brown, Amanda Amanda, and Todd Wolf. Just three.
Thank you. One more.
Charles Ames.
Thank you. I will cast my vote for Todd Wolf, Tristan Lauracella, Mark Hare, and Charles Ames.
So moving forward to round two would be Tristan Lauracella, Todd Wolf, Charles Ames, and then Laria Brown, and Amanda Quintana.
Very good. So moving forward, let's clean that up so we can see it a little bit better. Oops. About that. Mr. Wolf, Mr. Lauracella, the tie with Ms. Brown and Ms. Quintana, and then Mr. Ames. Very good. Councilmember Bell, your vote. And you get three rounds on this vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I vote for Laria Brown, Tristan Lauracella, and Amanda Quintana.
Mr. Bokey.
Tristan Lauracella, Todd Wolf, and Amanda Quintana.
Councilmember Branstadter. And then Ms. Schumacher, if you can move the box on the, there you go, so we can get that out of the way. Thank you, Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Laria Brown, Preston Lauracella, Amanda Quintana.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
I vote for Laria Brown, Amanda Quintana, and Todd Wolf.
Todd Wolf, Tristan Lauracella, and Charles Ames. Mr. Anderson.
Go forward.
Todd Wolf, Preston Lauracella, and Amanda Quintana.
Very good. Madam Clerk, round three.
Moving candidates, Tristan Lauracella and Amanda Quintana forward.
Let's go back because so I can see the votes in the last one real quick on the top three. So we've got, shouldn't we have three of them? Lauren, excuse me, Tristan Lauracella, Amanda Quintana, and Todd Wolf. Three of those going to the next round? Yep. So we're in round three, and then we pick two. So we have three to go forward to round three. As I understand that. Yep. There we go. Now, now we're cooking with wesson, as they say. Yes, now at this round, council members, we are at round three, and so each council member shall identify their top two. Starting with Councilmember Bokey.
Lauracella and Wolf.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Lauracella and Quintana.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Todd Wolf and Quintana.
I'm sorry?
Amanda Quintana.
Quintana?
Quintana.
Okay. I go next. I will vote for Tristan Lauracella and Todd Wolf. Councilmember Anderson.
Tristan Lauracella and Todd Wolf.
Councilmember Bell.
I will do Tristan Lauracella and Amanda Quintana.
Very good. We have a clear outcome on this round. Tristan Lauracella and Todd Wolf for the final round. At this round, each council member now identifies their top candidate from the final list. We each have one vote. Councilmember Branstadter.
Tristan Lauracella.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Tristan Marcella.
Councilmember Anderson.
Todd Wolf.
Councilmember Bell.
Tristan Lauracella.
Councilmember Bokey.
Todd Wolf.
Todd Wolf. Okay. Just to make things fun, I'll say Todd Wolf. Okay, so we have a tie. So at this time, we can conduct really another round of voting, or any council member can make a motion. And if there's a second for any particular candidate over the other, we can proceed that way. I don't know if proceeding with another vote is going to change votes or not, but that is an option, correct? Ms. Walker?
Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, and members of the council. As I have previously advised you, the only rule that applies under state law is that you make a selection before 90 days pass. If that passage of time happens, then the county council will tell you who your new council member is. And thus
How instructive of you. Thank you. Yeah.
I know that's not completely helpful, but you are at the point where you've narrowed it down to two candidates by an agreed upon process, and
We do have a city challenge coin that we could flip.
You could do that. Believe it or not, there are some places at law where there, when there is
Right.
a disagreement or something that can't be resolved, you can do it that way. However, your proposal that someone make a motion, that doesn't mean that the council has to agree with it.
Absolutely.
It simply puts it out on the floor for debate. If you have a motion in a second, you can then proceed to discuss.
I'm going to go ahead and take some prerogative unless there's a motion on the table to read, to run a revote and see if anyone's changed their mind on this particular one. Mr. Anderson.
I move that we appoint Tristan Lauracella.
I second that.
Any further discussion on that? You want to speak to the motion, Mr. Anderson?
I view the two that made it to the finals as essentially a dead heat in my estimation. I think both would make fine council members. I'm more concerned with having a logjam and having county council point somebody than choosing between two well-qualified candidates. And on that basis, this is a appointment that only runs till the middle of November when the election is certified. That's what we're looking is an eight month, an eight month term. And the, the electors of Lakewood get to choose whether that person continues or someone else goes. And I think that in the interest of having a qualified candidate that we're comfortable with, I'm essentially switching my vote.
Very good. Any further discussion on the motion before council? Any further discussion on the motion before council? And I want to make this a roll call vote, Madam Clerk. So we will now vote by roll call on the motion before the table, which has been seconded. And that being to identify Tristan Lauracella as the appointed council member to serve the duration of council, council position six.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Bokey?
Aye.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
And Mayor Whelan?
In the interest of having unanimity at this great time, congratulations, Mr. Lauracella.
Aye.
So ladies and gentlemen, we have selected Tristan Lauracella as our newest council member. Congratulations, sir, and congratulations to all the candidates. We will be actually doing the swearing in ceremony next Monday, the 20th. And so that will be on the formal council agenda for action. And so feel free to bring your family and all of you who have gone through this process. I want to thank you on behalf of all of us here. I think it was a good process. We hope you do too. We hope that everyone felt that they were heard and had a full and fair opportunity to present their qualifications and their interests to serve. And as I indicated during the end of the interview process, I hope that all of you who are interested and remain interested in serving recognize that this is not the destination, but what point, one point in the journey of your interest in continuing to serve Lakewood in all the various capacities that we all have to serve, whether starting with the citizen advisory board or commission as I did years ago, or as others have done. Whatever interest you may have, or whatever passion you may want to pursue, we have opportunities for you, and I would really hope you all stay engaged because you're very great qualified people, and we have appreciated your candidacy and certainly appreciated getting to know you all that much better. So thank you again for coming tonight and for being part of the process. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we will now adjourn this special meeting for the Lakewood City Council this Monday, March 13, 2023, and we will recess for five minutes to congratulate Mr. Lauracella as well as others, and then we'll reconvene for the city council study session. So we are now adjourned. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are back. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, March thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three. We have several items for discussion tonight. The first is a special events update with our recreation coordinator, Sally Martinez. Sally, if you'd like, you're welcome to come on down. I think there is a little pointer clicker here, so feel free to come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. Tonight I'll be talking about a special events that took place in two thousand and twenty-two and what's to come for two thousand and twenty-three. Next. So I'll be starting in January and just working our way through the calendar year. And in two thousand and twenty-two, we started off with the MLK celebration in January, and the theme changes every year by committee. The MLK Committee chooses that. And in two thousand and twenty-two, it was "The World Lives in Lakewood", and it was sponsored by Virginia Mason, Princess Can Health, and Twin Star Credit Union. In two thousand and twenty-two, we saw the largest sponsorships and grants for events since the inception of the city. And also born from that event was this mural. The mural idea came from that committee. Next. This is Jo Ethel Smith.
We, as a community, have a role to play to make Lakewood a better place. Let us now focus on making Lakewood a better place for all citizens.
So she really set the tone for our events for the year, which was really looking at everything through the lens of equity. We had a brand new event called Real Life Ninety-Six, which was a film competition. It was a great success with thirty-eight teams, twenty-five hundred dollars in cash prizes, which helps to get the teams, and six hundred people at the final screening. Several of you came. Thank you so much for all of you who, council members, are so great about attending our events, and many of you were there that evening to witness it. Next. This shorts video. And that promo video just shows the level of professionalism that we put into the event for our first year. Thank you, Brianna. Next. We applied for a No Child Left Inside grant, and we secured over twenty thousand dollars in funding to do a variety of outdoor events in the park. So for that reason, we had many new events. Thank you. Next. One was the Ray Evans Memorial Fishing Event. It wasn't new, but it helped support and provide fishing poles for every child who came to that event in May. It's one of our favorite events where every child gets to catch and keep two fish. Next. We had over two hundred participants aged five to twelve. And another event with that grant was a new one called Rockets Away, and we partnered with Pierce College and the Science Dome, and children made rockets and got to go in the Science Dome and view that. Next. We also implemented a row paddle canoe day. We were really trying to get out to our different parks to, so different people in areas that don't have transportation can access these events. So this was in the Telekom neighborhood at Harry Todd Park. Next. We had kayaks, canoes, paddleboards. We partnered with the YMCA to provide lifeguards. Young Life came out and volunteered, and the fire department and police boat were there, the brand new police boat. So people got to tour that. Next. We implemented another new event. This was a big year for new events. Yoga and meditation at the pavilion. Again, we immediately found sponsors before implementing this and got a significant amount of money from Virginia Mason and Amazon, as well as the Lakewood Rotary Grant. Next. Can you go back one, please? I just wanted to make sure Mayor Waylon got in there. Again, thank you for supporting our opening event. So one thing about yoga is a lot of people have this idea that it's just for a certain economic level, a certain fitness level, and we wanted to open yoga up to everyone and be really inclusive. So it's only five dollars, and we were getting exactly our target audience, which is so exciting. Next. The classes are four days a week, and to date, we've served over nine hundred people. The last four Mondays have been sold out. The last four Saturdays have been sold out. Yeah, so it's picked up really quickly. A lot had to do with that welcome walk and the New Year, New You event, which was another new event where we exposed people to the pavilion and the yoga all day that day for free. So, yes. Put your hand, yeah, very. Next. At the same time, we implemented meditation. We do this monthly on Saturdays. The first day, we had sold out at fifty people. We have one next Saturday, and it sold out at seventy people. This was really eye-opening and wonderful because most of these people have never meditated before, and they're sitting for an hour in silence and really getting a lot out of it. Next. The New Year, New You event was really inspirational. And again, thank you. Most, all the council members came out and city manager to support this event. Strong partnership with the Clever Park School District. It had long been on my mind, since we have such a transitional population, to really welcome that population and to think I would build strong community members if they knew how much we valued them coming to our community and showed that through this welcome walk. Next. The Clever Park School District sent out a communication to all the families, but they did a special communication to the families that just enrolled in the last six months, and those families were out there. And you may have talked to them as well, but we had people put their name tags on, said their name, and then how long they've lived in Lakewood. And some just had a zero, and you knew they just came there, and that was exactly who we wanted to come. And the youth council was out there giving tours. We boasted smores. We had live music and showed people the new trail around Wahop Lake. Next. We had four new street festivals that were a huge success on Motor Avenue. Next. The first one, they each had a different theme. The first was Dancing in the Streets. It had a great turnout. We pulled out, you know, vendors, beer garden, live music, food trucks. Those were kind of the consistent themes with all of the events, and they were all from about four to eight o'clock. Next. In June, it was Carnival of Cultures, where we highlighted all the wonderful cultures in Lakewood. Next. August was Jazz Night and Car Show. This was the first time we'd, well, we'd done the street festivals, but also a car show. It was a great success. I was a bit worried because most car shows are very early in the morning, but this was later evening and worked just beautifully. Next. September was Fiesta de la Familia. It was so popular that now we're going to move that to Port Silicon Park on September ninth and have it be its own big festival. Next. It was sponsored by KBTCTV and Twin Star Credit Union. For this particular event, I put together a committee. It's an important event. It's a big population in our community, and I didn't want to be creating that in a silo. We have an amazing group sitting around the table, twelve to fifteen people, who are really influential Latinos in the community and Tacoma as well, to make sure that we're doing this right and bring in the right partners. Next. Next. There was an art show, and that was a big deal. And many of those artists also did the signal boxes for us and are showing here at City Hall. Next. The Lakewood Farmers Market. We moved it to a new location within the park with the long path that went through it, kind of like a promenade. And that is the last time we're moving the market. It's the perfect place. And we had about seventy vendors, twenty-one food vendors. We saw over fifty-five thousand people throughout the year, and the vendor sales were almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next. This was a big deal this year. You know, looking through that lens of equity and inclusivity, we implemented SNAP and EBT, and we served five hundred and sixty-six duplicated people and distributed over fourteen thousand dollars in SNAP and fourteen thousand in match. So, you know, these are people that are just spending money at the market that perhaps couldn't spend money there before. So it's a big deal. Most farmers markets have it. It's a little bit more tricky when you're a city, but we went through that entire process with finance, and it came to fruition. So we'll be doing that in perpetuity, hopefully. Next. We got a report from Wyken Senior just last week, and they spent over ninety thousand dollars at our market, which is enormous. And then we know that fifteen hundred kids ate fruits or veggies with our Healthy Bucks program that we continue with our sponsorship money from Virginia Mason, Princess Can Health. Next. We always work to get new vendors. I was particularly excited about these vendors that offered coffee, bakery items, and hot peppers. Next. This just shows a new layout that focuses on accessibility, and we also work to have some vegan options with our hot food vendors. Next. We worked with, got some new farmers that specialize in microgreens and boutique vegetables, and that was just right out of Tacoma, whereas our other farmers come from Yakima. Thank you. Next. So just a shout out to the police department, who make everyone feel safe there, which is really important in the climate we have today. And it takes, it takes the entire team to pull off this market, and everyone's really genuinely enthusiastic and ready to get out there and work, so, as well as our volunteers. And then we had just a wonderful summer fest. Oh, gosh, it was such a good feeling event. We added new things like skim boarding. We always try to find something new and new and trending. So, next. One of those things was the morning balloon rides. And for a big reason, that was out of Seattle, it's Seattle Blooming Company. So it works with our lodging tax grant to get people outside the fifty-mile radius. And they were free. Next. New was this Black Hawk helicopter, which was just so exciting. Next. We had the Museum of Glass Hot Shop, which I've wanted to get for the last seven years. And they made us something that they wanted to present really quickly. This is for the city council and mayor. They created this, and so we can decide where that goes. And this.
Something like that we might take to Gimme is whenever it gives or something. Might become anything.
Oh, so while the Museum of Glass is in Tacoma, it's expensive to get into, and that is one reason I wanted to expose people in our community to the arts. We added Waltz at the Luna Circus for entertainment, which was a big hit with the kids. Next. And then we kept our fan favorites, which are the extreme trampoline jumpers and our motocross, crazy motocross tricks. Next. These are just some pictures to see the smiling faces on people that can come to a free event where there's something for everyone, and you can see the diversity in the crowd. Next. The grand finale on the international stage was the fire dancing. Next. And the balloon glow. And the drone show, and here's a short clip.
Summer Fest. That's cool. That's awesome.
So thank you very much for funding that. It was spectacular, much greater than I ever expected it could be. I think that everyone agreed with that, and we're looking forward to doing that in two thousand and twenty-three. Truck and tractor day is a favorite for everyone. And then our summer concert series was on Tuesdays, and that followed the farmers market. So we decided to have that synergy where the end of the market flowed into the concerts so that people could grab dinner. There was a half an hour overlap. People could grab dinner from the food trucks and then come on over to the concert. Next. I just wanted you to see the lineup and then people dancing, of course. Next. Oh, this is just a very quick little, it's such a fun atmosphere for families. Next. And then the Christmas parade. We had the iconic Grinch. Next. We had two Santas, and this turned out to be just an amazing decision. We had a black Santa and a white Santa, and they, it was perfect. Next. We had over thirty-five entries in the parade. The community came out so strong to support this and to be in it and put all the hard work that goes into making a float. Thank you. Next. And then Clever Park School District. I wanted to just give them another shout out. Leanna's been working so hard to make sure to be at all of our events. She's always calling me saying, can I have an application? When's the next event? She got over three hundred and fifty students out. That's really remarkable. Next. And then we have our new Latino artist reception, highlighting seven artists. City Hall. This is very brief.
My name is René Julio.
My name is René Julio, I'm an artist here in the area of Washington. Basically, my uh, my work is representing mixed food conditions in this case, the day of the day.
My name is Otsever Hart. And I'm a, an artist. I do uh, also uh, sculpture and dreams and all different maybe.
I'm going to introduce you to River Meschi. He's a very mysterious, but yet jubilant human being. And I think that that comes through in all of her work.
Hello, my name is Juan Latorre. I am an artist from Peru. I am having initially words that they are uh, of people who have done something in history.
I'm a digital artist and uh, my work. Uh, thi- thi- this piece in particular is, was based on the deal of my, it's built for our culture. Uh, it's very important because we celebrate our ancestors.
Miguel Calderón's work. He is from Honduras and he is a master drawer with charcoal. He loves to draw charcoal.
My name is Mauricio Rorino and uh, I'm the ringleader of this group. And uh, really excited and honored to be with all my friends here who are all fantastic artists.
Thank you all for coming. These are just some photos, city manager. City council members. Next. Ron Banner. So that was a wrap on twenty twenty-two. Um, we're already into twenty twenty-three and we've already had our MLK celebration. The theme this year was everybody can be great because anybody can serve. Next. This is very brief.
Okay. It's painful to go back. My parents would, we would say, go to the bathroom before we go in ones. And you had to go and pay your light bill, your water bill. And if somebody else was there, you step back. Even in the hospitals, doctor's office. We had. Oh, when I think of it, see how this is coming up? I had my tassels removed. And I, my could not, my body could not go into the hospital. We had a house that was on the grounds. On the grounds. And they, I had the doctor. Any doctor that wo- worked on you, he had to have, a white nurse could not do it. Equal rights? No. Living in segregation. I lived. I live what segregation is about.
Separation by sex, race, class, religion, and through other means is still very prevalent in our societies. Part of loving each other, like Dr. King wanted, is loving each other because of our differences, not despite our differences. It is the mission of me and my generation to end segregation through all the means in which it manifests.
So just a shout out to Sylvie, who uh, creates these videos and juxtaposed the elders with the youth um, on the civil rights movement in this video. And just so important to remember. Thank you. Next. Okay, what's coming for twenty twenty-three? Um, more, more of the usual and uh, we've got the fishing event coming up next after our April first ribbon cutting of the new art. Um, next. Uh, this is a new postcard. Uh, which I have to hand out to you all and it lists everything we have and we're going to start now. Um, this is kind of the first time we've done it this early, you can take one and pass it on. Um, and just have those at all of our events and for everyone to pass out. Uh, so that our community is well aware of all the events that are coming up. We, oh, can you go back one? Oh, sorry. Yeah, this. Uh, I, this last slide that Brianna's gonna pull up is just the list of the uh, com- summer concerts that we've lined up already. Uh, for this year, it's a little bit hard to see, but it's a, it's a great mix. And they are starting June twenty-seventh and um, you can see there's um, many more than last year and they're going through the end of August. Um, one is a military band, so that is free. And that's the I five band in July. So thank you so much. Again, thank you for being out there. I, I don't think I've ever been to a event where there have been several city council members and city manager in support of these events, so thank you. Any questions?
Sure, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions, members of the council? Sure, Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I had a question about how you said you moved um, the Fiesta, the Fiesta, yeah, what's happening with that? I'm very interested.
Okay, so we moved the date to September ninth and we moved it to Port Silicon Park so that we can grow it. Uh, so we are going to expand the art show and that'll be under Shelter One. Um, we'll have, we've expanded the time, so instead of four to eight-thirty, it'll be noon to seven. And we're having a car show. And the couple that's running it has their own magazine in their Latino as well. Um, and then we'll have food trucks and um, other wild fun, crazy elements. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
I just have to let you know that I got your notices. That we are meeting Thursday with the board and we'll let you know what events LMCC will be attended. Great, great, it was so great to see you out there, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Well, Sally, I'd just like to compliment you on all your efforts over the last few years and, and the, the agenda here is, has so varied, it has something for everybody. It has quantity, it has quality. Um, and uh, it, it's something that people are commenting on actually. It's uh, a, kind of a, it is, it creates community in addition to being in the community, so. Um, keep up your good work. I personally appreciate it and I always feel bad if I'm out of town and I miss something. So I, I think that says something right there.
Thank you all, pass that on. It's all definitely a team effort. Thank you so much.
Yeah, but thank you very much and, and the, the new events, I mean, that walking event, which I needed to do, and the weather was good, I guess, so which also played a major role, but I think it was just a really good, great idea to get people out. And I did meet a, a couple that were brand new here, that moved here from out of state and so it, 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 you, whatever communications you did, worked, right? It, it got, it got folks out who, who were new to the area. And I think the yoga and meditation stuff, which I, I don't do because yoga is some form of torture for me, but uh, I think of, an- another just super idea and I, and I agree that um, just that the breadth of offerings, this is exactly what we wanted. Use of the Colonial Center, use of Port Silicon Park. Um, use of the pavilion. I've had, I have relatives that show up to the farmer's market and go to the concert from out of town, so. Not, I mean, they're nearby, but they, they, they come to the, they really like the farmer's market. Um, and, and the kind of the breadth of offerings on the farmer's market. My, my question now on the street festivals, it looks like you're down to two then for this, for the year. Then you're just going to do the June and August because now you've moved the Fiesta in July is Summer Fest.
Correct, July gets really tricky.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
And um, Bryn did a wonderful job marketing all of these events and getting people to the events, so thank you Bryn.
I'll just echo all the laudatory comments. It's, it's really fun to see how some of the trial and error work over the course of time has culminated into works. A good example of that is the farmer's market with the concerts in the park. I mean, we finally got that overlap to really work. And the vendors like it, the people love it, you know, it's really good synergy, so I think that's great. So again, great breadth and depth of programming. I think people are very much enjoying it. The only uh, thing, just in terms of a couple of, of thoughts on feedback. You know, the Real Life Ninety-Six was a really good event last year. And it's unfortunate that we weren't able to staff it to kind of keep it going. And I know that it was an Arts Commission sort of staffed thing. It may be something to consider. Uh, going back to the Arts Commission and seeing again if this is something of value. Because again, it attracted a different segment of participants in Lakewood and it was a very diverse segment. Uh, it was participatory and then Mr. Ames was involved in that and a lot of other people. They really enjoyed it, so it may be one of those issues where if you with your leadership of the Arts Commission decide that that may be something to do and if we need funding, because it's always tough to have a person do it. That may be something you contract out or figure out what it would cost to do that. And then we talk about maybe it's a budget adjustment, perhaps. If, if it's something you think would work. The other thing I hear about that might be a gap. You know, Mr. Anderson and I talked years ago about creating a signature event for Lakewood, right? And it culminated into the sprint triathlon. And we did that for a few years and it was starting to build, in my humble opinion. I know that attendance might have been down from your perspective, but people miss that. And the one thing, and then we tried to do the, the uh, the dash, the, the Christmas dash thing.
Jingle Bell Dash, yeah.
Jingle, and people love that. And then, then we didn't do it. And so I, you know, I would ask that we think about doing, we, you know, we got the walking, we got the yoga. I think there's a desire for folks who like the five K community sort of feel. Where you get a lot of folks involved and it, it could be the Jingle Bell Dash again. So you, you can push it at the end of the year or you can do something at Summer Fest. And you might even think if it's too big for park staff to do, you know, Joe Clark is always looking to raise money. Maybe tap him and the folks at the school district and say, if you guys want to raise some money and you want to do it around running to raise money for your big cross-country events, here's an opportunity. We'll let you guys haunt for this. The Jingle Bell Dash sponsored by the Clover Park or Lakes High School, Cross County, whatever, you know? But I think the community would like to see that again. Uh, and it, it would work well. And the final thing on the, the arts exhibits we've had in City Hall, those are fantastic. One thing we might again consider, I know it's a budget issue. But it may be one of those things under our public arts policy that the Arts Commission has promulgated and we've adopted. That they elect to purchase one piece of art. Uh, from the exhibitions, if they're done quarterly, we buy one piece and we invest in public art. And the Arts Commission or the public during those receptions, they vote for the piece. And then it's funded and then it's displayed in City Hall. I mean, Lord knows we have a lot of white wall space that we could fill with something colorful. And I know a lot of institutions do that and it would start to build a public art collection for the city and it would be at a reasonable cost and would make those people really appreciative that people love their art and loved it enough to vote for it and the city funded a piece of it. And I think that would be a good thing to do. Yeah, Mr. Bren Center.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, and I just had to comment on the mayor's thoughts that um, many of the things that you have done over the last few years have been successful, but labor intensive. So the, the issue is that everything that we do, well, it does, don't need to be one and done. They may, they don't have to be annual. But for instance, the film competition, we could look for a four-year cycle or a three-year cycle. Uh, or so, or, or, or something like that to go, go, to be able to go and do. Because I think it's also refreshing that there are new things every year. Uh, and that, that, that people loo- loo- look forward to them. And um, and I think that this past year in particular, there were multiple venues. And it brought people to an understanding of both of Fort Silicon Park, but of Harry Todd Park and of the American Lake Park and, and, and even of the, the City Hall. So um, you, you, you know, I, I think that continuing to be, be creative. Um, that uh, but don't put something on the shelf permanently, but look at a chance that, 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 that it can be redone on some sort of a cycle. And um, and don't be shy about asking us for money.
Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the uh, council liaison for the Arts Commission, definitely let me know what is needed so that we can make sure. I think that we communicate really well and get stuff on the work plan. I would like to reiterate the mayor's point on the public art. I think that purchasing a piece from um, you know, any of the art shows would be great. I work another place where that's what we do and we hang the art everywhere and we rotate it out on a regular basis. And you can really get a great collection going for the city. And I think it just says a lot to the artists and it just says a lot that investing in the public art.
It is one, the personal note on the, the quality of some of the performers. I, I noticed in the presentation, the young man playing the steel drums. Uh, he was one of my athletes when I coached track. And he just recently received, believe this, a, a Masters in Music in Steel Pan Performance from Southern Illinois University. So I mean, they, i- it's not just some street performer out there, it's somebody who's really, really good, so.
Quality, number one. So good job with all your work. Well, thank you for the presentation and for taking some constructive feedback from us. And we look forward to just more, as we say, more and better.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Take care. Okay, next, we've got our Assistant City Attorney Samantha Johnson is going to give us uh, an overview on a proposed ordinance related to the protection and preservation of public spaces. We do have this, excuse me. First of all, it's going to be the uh, use of controlled substances memorandum and then it will parlay into the protection, preservation of public spaces with our city attorney Heidi Walker, but first, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of the council. And so I'm here tonight to speak to you all and answer any of the questions that you may have about the ordinance that I've um, drafted. It looks very similar to some neighboring ordinances throughout the state of Washington in order to address the open use of drugs throughout our city and the negative impacts that it is having on our city. Um, I believe you guys both have, or all have the two pieces of information I submitted, which was both the memo and the proposed ordinance. Uh, but this is specifically trying to address, as you all know, in the Stacey Blake case, it essentially made it legal to possess closer. Can you guys all hear me? Okay, great. Uh, legal to possess illegal drugs. So there is specific referral process that is used when an officer comes into contact with someone who is found in possession of illegal drugs. That referral system. There's no universal database in order to keep track of offenders and when they're found in possession of drugs. So what it has left law enforcement with is an ineffective tool to address the behaviors that we're all commonly seeing. Right, did someone say, excuse me?
That was me saying absolutely.
Oh.
Yeah, it's the voice from above saying, right. Yeah.
And so what this ordinance is put in place to address is to give law enforcement a tool to approach individuals that are doing the types of behaviors that's leading to danger in our community, violence in our community. Uh, we have a, a public safety summit here, I believe October of last year, where a lot of managers and business owners throughout Lakewood came and expressed their concerns about open use of drugs. Whether it be outside their storefronts, in their bathrooms. Uh, people stealing in order to further their substance abuse habit. And just really the negative impacts that it is having on the community in Washington at large. But what we're here to talk about tonight is Lakewood. Uh, so the two sections in here that would be a proposed amendment to our current controlled substance is the open use of drugs. So while Blake preempts the possession or Blake addresses the possession and preempts cities from enacting And preempts cities from enacting ordinances. In opposition of that, it does not regulate the open use of drugs. And so that is what this ordinance is meant to address. As well as drug. Paraphernalia. There is an RCW, but it does not have that intent element that Blake addressed. So there will be an amendment where it adds in the intentional element. I have some. Photos to show you guys that were gathered by law enforcement here in the city of Lakewood. Um, so these photos right here in front of Starbucks on South Tacoma Way in Lakewood. Uh, the officer, if you guys can see, there is a. At the bottom of the photo, like a grayish bar, that's actually an officer, a marked patrol vehicle taking that photo. So the officer pulls right up in a marked patrol vehicle. Full uniform and the person starts smoking. Uh, he indicated he believed that to be fentanyl. Uh, that typically is ingested with a piece of tin foil. They light the foil underneath and then that. They call it a tutor that he has in his hand. They. It's called chasing the dragon, I guess is the term where they chase the smoke. The law enforcement officer asked him, could you move along, please? Like at least not do that right there. As you guys know, this is right when you get off five twelve, the gateway to Lakewood. This is the type of behaviors that are seen. Uh, we can go to the next slide. Um, the photo on, I guess if you're facing the screen would be the left, that's outside the foothills furniture store. Uh, that is a bulb which is used commonly to smoke methamphetamine. And his little drug kit right out there in the open. On the other, on the right side, there's the foil used for drug paraphernalia that's discarded. That's also concerning because any residue that's left on there, if a person contacts that, especially if it's fentanyl, they can lead to accidental overdose or if a child were to grab it. You can go to the next slide. Uh, this is a short video segment.
And yeah, so you're just video, you're just smoking fentanyl here, right? I know. Is it, is that fentanyl you were smoking? It's the whole country?
It's coming through the border like that. You think, you think you're good old President Biden for that one?
Really? Okay, was your buddy there? And again, we're not going to arrest him for it here, but was he smoking?
I don't know. I just got here.
That's what it, it sounded like, yeah.
I just, you guys, I just pulled up.
Okay. Okay, all right. You got the message, Joe, right? Air agency agreements everywhere. All right, have a good day.
So as you guys can see, this is how law enforcement is currently addressing the problem. They have no tools. In order to effectuate an arrest. This is at Northwest Integrated Health. The officer. Saw them smoking fentanyl, told them to knock it off. As they were walking away, he sees them lighting up again. So the officer starts approaching him and saying, hey, are you smoking fentanyl again? Um, he, if you heard on the video, he said, agency agreements, got it? Because they have an agency agreement where they can remove people that are doing unwanted behavior. But outside of telling them they're not welcome there and them refusing to leave, there's no. Law enforcement action that can be taken. They can confiscate the drugs, but at some point. It's just not in the officer's best interest if there's no sort of criminal element to it. When they arrest people and they have them on there, they do confiscate and destroy. Uh, but they're not referred for charges. So we can go to the next one. Uh, this is, uh, before you play it, I'm just going to give a little backstory that an officer had contacted an individual that was using drugs. Uh, this individual consented to an interview with the officer. The officer was inquiring about the accessibility of drugs here in Lakewood.
That get you, get you back on the right track. So we've been having a little chat and uh, right now, uh, you're using. Or, or have been using what, what kind of drugs?
Uh, fentanyl meds. No, this is the whole thing. Um. I did, I'm not doing all drugs like I was right now. I'm not doing heroin as much, I'm not doing heroin like that. I'm doing just pills and fentanyl.
Okay. How, how much is fentanyl going for right now on the street?
So fentanyl powder is going to like seven, seven dollars a point, but pills right now, I could get a pill for a buck fifty. For a dollar fifty, that for a dollar fifty, I can get that in for a hundred pills. I can get it for. Hundred and fifty dollars for it. I get a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, I get a hundred pills or I look the mother guy and get a. Hundred pills for a hundred dollars, so it's both for a dollar each. Yeah, the more and more I buy, the, the less it costs.
Gotcha. The, the pills you're talking about, are those, for those blues?
Yeah, blues.
Okay. And how, how hard is it to get that?
I literally, I literally went like, I literally went to an impatient place, you know, I got, when I got picked out, I literally was on the street. Where like somewhere down in Harbor and just like asked a random person, like, you got any pills? He's like, yeah, I got some right now, you know, it's both fun. You know, that's getting by on the streets nowadays. They, they got it either on them or they know somebody that's down the block. And you just get it real quick, just like that.
So if you were walking around, say here in, in Lakewood, that, how, how fast do you think?
I can listen to minutes.
Thirty minutes or less? Great. Oh, three minutes less. Okay.
If I'm right here and there's nobody around, I could just walk right down there and see one person on the street and boom.
So why, why are people uh, smoking or using fentanyl now as opposed to some of the other drugs?
Um, the, the strength of it, the. The, the, how strong it is and how cheap it is. And uh. And because it's like so many people are doing it now, it's so much easier to get. Then like some, let's say, other like acid or streams, so like, you know, I see you give the nice easy still. And cheaper it is, the, it's like a. It's like McDonald's, you know what I mean? It's a fast restaurant. You go and get quick, get high and go back, read it.
So obviously this ordinance isn't meant to address the dealing of drugs. Uh, there's different statutes, RCWs that are meant to address. The dealing of narcotics. However, the accessibility here in Lakewood, if you could hear, he said three minutes, within three minutes, he'd be able to find pills. Uh, there's just essentially no deterrent factor when you're just able to grab the pills. Go ahead and light up and get high. Um, right in open public. And as you can see, somebody is volunteering. Information because we've gotten to a point with our current. RCWs that handle drugs where this isn't even, you know, I would say probably about. Three years ago, no one would want to give this information to an officer. Because they would be scared that it would be used in prosecution against them. And now we're at the point where they're just openly sharing. Uh, there is another one. Uh, this just goes into the danger to the police and the community. This uh, same interview, he's talking about how flagrant uh, folks are about. Law enforcement's inability to do anything about it.
People are doing things, I don't know if you're tracking. All the people taking off from the police, that kind of stuff?
I'm sure like they got, they got, they say they got, I see the dealers, right?
Uh huh.
They got thousands of them. They uh, they, they most definitely, they, they a hundred percent should have a gun. If they don't. They're, they're not real dealers. They're just dumb people who got money. But um. They, they most, they a hundred percent have a gun. They. Their men's, their mentality is, all right, I can't, unless, unless they got a backup plan to where they. Got something where they come out, you know, they're not probably going to use it, they're probably going to, you know, play smart, whatever. But the dumb, the dumb people who are like, oh, you know, I'm a real gangster, I'm a. Uh, blah, 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 blah. Like. All those people right there, they, the angry ones, they're gonna, they're gonna pop off, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna try to chase, chase them when they chase, they got nothing that. They're going to try to pop and run high, I think it's GTA five star, it'll escape, but they. They won't, so they'll, no, no hesitation to shoot a cop, shoot. Person, shoot anybody.
People talk about that at all?
All the time, you got those poses who are. The nice, but when you see, when you see a police behind them, they freeze up and they, you know, scared as shitless. If you can go to jail, who do you want, who's this? Um, but the other people, they're like, they're, they're real serious, like they don't. They don't, they don't care. The key strike and they're talking shit the whole time and if the police come upon them. They either pull it out or fucking either, or hit them, boom, boom, and dip or whatever they. These pills are, these pills are really turning these people into. This is, I see. Make them a part of it.
And so that's obviously a concern as a community is. You know, our law enforcement officer's safety and their ability to. Provide a safe neighborhood and community for individuals. And if there's people in the community that according to this individual, there's no teeth behind law enforcement, that they're not scared of law enforcement. Uh, at the end there, it kind of got cut off a little bit, but he said when people are high, they're heartless. And so I really think it kind of goes to show um. Where their mind is at and when they're just openly using drugs. And then the last one is the opiates in the community.
But opiates.
Eighteen ten marks.
Opiates, I don't think should ever be legal because. Because you know, the. People, people, they're getting, they're getting sick and sick and sick. And you guys getting opium after, after a certain point, they're like, you know, I wish I never fucking took this. I wish I never. Ever smoked this in the first place. I wish I. And then they, they, they hate their lifestyle that they, they, they live and they. One day like, you know, they're in the park when they're like staring at the ceiling and you just look, sit there like, fuck, man, I'm tired of this. I'm only nineteen and I'm, I've been doing this since I was fourteen, I'm tired of this. Uh. And they, so opiates should never, opiates should always be legal because I guarantee you that if somebody was going to use. And you caught them before they used, they would probably be so upset and so pissed off, but you would save that person's life. From years and years and years. Of uh, shit like this.
And so why I believe this video is impactful for this presentation is right now courts are really suffering in regards to our drug courts. There's just not. For lack of a better word, a candidate pool that's there. When people are committing more violent crimes, the assaults, the burglaries, and they can be deferred to drug courts. Uh, but typically when we used to have the controlled of. Or possession of a controlled substance, they would get diverted to drug court where there would be treatment. Uh, through the establishment of this ordinance here in Lakewood Municipal Court, while we don't have a drug court, we can, the judge can order treatment. And what this individual had shared was if someone would have intervened earlier, then my life would be different. And right now we don't have the tools put in place to intervene earlier for people that are simply openly using. And not committing the incidental crimes that come, you know, after it, the thefts, the assaults. Those sort of things. Once they get to that behavior, yes, we can still order treatment, but if we could divert them sooner by. You know, getting them in front of a judge and having treatment ordered, then I do believe it would make our community safer. So at this point, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. I, I'd just like to second what you're. Add to your comments with respect to, to our tribe courts. My day job, we got. The county, I got confirmation today that the. Uh, the drug courts, uh, treatment courts are virtually, virtually standstill. They're well funded and. They have no clients. Because there's no coercive element to get them in there, even though. The drug charges were almost always secondary charges on possession. That they could plead down to and get treatment. Uh, it's obviously not working. So. Uh, I, I think there's um. A humanitarian aspect of this. It's just not being, well, we're going to enforce the law and. Stop some crime, stop the blight on the community, make things safer for people and businesses. There's also the fact that there's no way to get these folks in to treatment. Uh, under current laws that have to deal with involuntary commitment or. Or diversionary courts. So um. We can do something that the state legislature um. Is want to do because of their political gridlock and, and political bent, and that is. Actually push people and be, be apparent. Maybe it's paternalistic, but be a parent and, and try to get uh, people with these problems into treatment. Uh. Because there's. There's more money for that now. Uh, but it's not being utilized. So I, I commend your efforts and. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing this move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Brand Center and then Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, well, you know, thank you for your work and drafting and bringing. You know, the ordinance before us. I think that. You're quite right that. The, the community wants to see some action taken. Uh, and not just to, to punish people, but as. Mr. Anderson says. Something that will. Will, 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 will help them at, at the same time that they're, that, 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 that we're using the. Criminal justice system to, to, to. Shine attention on, on, on their problems and being able to go and do that. I, I, I had a couple of questions within the draft of the ordinance. Um, and. We've, we've limited this ordinance. To youth in public places. And um. So maybe my first question is, 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 why do we need to limit it there? Why can't it be just anywhere in the city?
So our state constitution and federal constitution highly protect, you know, individuals' privacy interests inside their own home. So. When it comes to regulating any sort of behavior inside someone's home, I. I'm not familiar, I mean, outside of, you know, violence that is reported. Uh, or other sort of illegal activity. If someone wants to openly or to use narcotics or illegal substances in their own home, I don't believe that that's the issue that we're trying to. Address here in Lakewood. Uh, I believe what the concern is, is. People sitting out on the streets in open spaces using it, going into, you know, restrooms inside buildings and smoking fentanyl and it smells awful. Uh, so I'd be really hard pressed to try and regulate activity inside somebody's home. Uh, I also think as a law enforcement officer, it'd be very difficult to. Detect that unless you were looking through someone's window or maybe a family member were to report it.
And I, I, I would just, I ask the question because. It's a common complaint that I hear about. There, there's a party next door. There are. People in the yard next door that are engaging in activity like this and then, you know, and they. They, they, they would like the police to come and do something about it. Uh, you know, it's not. You know, you know, there's all sorts of ranges of privacy that, that go off over there. In the draft ordinance, under the definition of public place. It sets off means an area generally visible to public view. Um, so does that include someone's front yard?
I would say yes, uh, you know, further down, um. You know, generally visible to public view and includes without limitation any place where the public has a right of access. So I would. I mean, it comes up to prosecutor discretion depending on the specific facts or law enforcement discretion, but if someone's sitting in their front yard. Smoking fentanyl and that's open to the public in regards to their observations. You know, can someone bring mail to their front door? Can somebody, you know, Amazon driver bring it to their front door? Newspaper, that to me indicates that it's open to the public. Maybe not in the way that a business is, uh. But it would depend on the specific facts, whether or not that would be successful prosecution.
You know, we, that, that definition. Uh, continues beyond that opening statement with a lot of. Specific example. Um, I, I think that I would. Like to see added to that list of. Um. Lakes. And bodies of water, because I think folks that are. Using it while out boating and things like that, not only that, are they, that. Potentially dangerous. If they're in charge of doing all that, but I, I view that as a public. Uh, you know, a public entity, if, if there is a. Somewhere in the, in the list, something like that could be inserted, I would. Be, be in favor of. That being clear. To people to go on and do that. And then my last comment about the draft is that in, in one of the whereas is. There's a citation about an incident that happened in Tacoma. And I think that our rationale and in the Lakewood City Council, should we, we should be basing our. Establishing a code based on. The reality, the experiences that what we. Have in Lakewood. And I don't know whether that has to, whether we need to include anecdotal examples. Um. Of things in Lakewood and, and you, you showed us some, some. Testimonial videos and some, some, some photos to be able to go and do that, that. Um, I think. Convince us that there is a, a, there is a problem and certainly, uh. The potential for issues with community safety and the safety of the individuals that are. Using drugs and, and, and the. Relationship to other criminal offenses. But I'd rather not rely on citing. Things that are from Tacoma, uh, in our. Setting the basis for why we're taking action. Um, almost better to, 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 to not include specific examples. Um, and, and stick with the general. Understanding that we have of the situation in Lakewood. Uh, to be able to go, go and, go and do that. But I think um. The legislature is, is not proceeding in a direction that is going to get us to where. The police have a, a viable tool and the municipal court has a viable tool. Uh, and this could get us in that direction, okay, um. You know, i- i- it's obviously not a panacea. But it is uh, something that can maybe change the direction of the problems and from getting worse to getting better. And, you know, so I would be, certainly be. Supportive of seeing this on our agenda next week, Mr. Man.
Mr. Bokey, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a real quick question because it refers, I think, to the code and the RCW. So, um, just the mechanics of it. Officer sees somebody openly using. And I'm assuming an officer has to do it nowadays, that me calling in won't be enough. First of all, so I mean, the mechanics of that, and then. We would haul him off to the squally. What's the sentence length?
Uh, well, the sentencing's in the prerogative of the judge, uh, what I do have. Control over as a prosecutor is the sentence I could recommend to the judge, but ultimately it's in their purview, what they choose is best. To address the behavior that's before them in light of their criminal history. You know, I was speaking uh, with the city attorney today about if this ordinance were to have passed. To come up with a policy within the department for a first offense, it would look like. You know, this divert to treatment. You know, get your charges dismissed, second offense, it could look like this, divert to treatment with some community service, get your charges dismissed. And then third offense started to look at jail time with treatment, so it would get progressively harsher. Again, that's just a recommendation that we can make, uh, it's up to the judge and her final authority or their final authority, depending who's on the bench. And end your question about the um. Who's going to make the contact, it would, law enforcement does have to be involved because something that we would have to prove is that it was a drug. And so they'll have to do testing and stuff, so it's. Not just enough that a neighbor calls and says they're doing fentanyl again and there's nothing further done.
Okay, but, and I appreciate the, the lawyer-like answer that I received, um. What's the maximum sentence under this?
Uh, currently how the ordinance is drafted is it's a misdemeanor, which is ninety days in jail and a thousand dollar fine.
Okay, thank you.
This is Bill.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for your work on this, I do believe that this is a tool and a compassionate tool to help people get the right treatment that they need. I know that we are restrained certain areas. Um, but so the intention of this is to get people into treatment, correct? This is not just to, I mean, there may be other things involved, but the overall intention is just not to take so much in this quality. And be done with it, it's to use this as a tool. To get them into the next step of getting treatment, like we've referred to the guy on the video saying if someone would have. Helped me, got me a treatment, but I understand that the misdemeanor would lead to. Treatment, is that correct?
Correct, so that is one of the available options we could ask for is treatment, I do. Think that there would be dual intents of this statute, it is to have a tool to. Require treatment through the court system, being at court ordered, but also a tool for officers to help address the. Continued concerns that they're seeing in regards to, uh, you know, the. I think you called it the blight that is occurring in Lakewood given the use, and so obviously the tool does lead to. I mean, they don't have to book a nose folly if they don't want to, right, they can just refer for charges and let them go. Uh, but the ultimate goal is to address the behaviors that are happening, uh, municipal court is a rehabilitative court, so it's meant to rehabilitate an individual. When you get up into county, it's more of a punitive court, so that is the ultimate goal.
I have several comments and some questions.
Okay.
Uh, I think I passed along a few comments uh, through the city attorney, uh, just to clean up something, you know, there was a. Section one typo in. The second line of section one, we should refer to use of dangerous drugs in. Public as opposed to in person.
Correct, thank you.
So we've got that, um, on the definition of public place, I want to add the word libraries. I want to be specific, where it says public buildings and grounds, com, including schools, I'm gonna say libraries, comma, parks, playgrounds, mini halls. So I want to be intentional about that. And then when it talks about. Uh, further on down below. Establishments to which the public's invited, including restaurants, theater stores, I think that's implicit, but I think we should probably put, including. Uh, you know, commercial businesses. Including but not limited to restaurants, theater, something to that effect, because I want. Medical establishments or other commercial businesses to be able to say. This dog isn't gonna hunt here anymore, right? And I really appreciate some of the comments received tonight about how this is a, a good step toward. Exerting a bit of positive compassion toward the issue, I'll be the first to tell you. I have limited compassion for the issue, and here's why. Uh, I represent in my day job, a lot of property owners, commercial property owners and business owners, and they are tired of it. Southgate, where you had a picture out there of Starbucks. The owners of Southgate are tired of the drama brought on by these people doing drugs in the open. They have spent thirty thousand dollars on new fencing to restrict access to their property. They have almost lost two commercial tenants. Because the employees of the tenants are tired of having to step over and see people doing drug use openly in the public on their parking lots. They are tired of having to hire private security because they can't count on Lakewood PD to show up all the time, they can't be everywhere, all the time. They are tired of it, they're losing their businesses, they're losing tenants, I am losing compassion. So we need to get this on the dock and approve it yesterday. Uh, because our business owners are losing and we're tired of having them lose. I was at a Pierce Transit Commission meeting today. And the one public commenter was a nice young man who said, you know, he's really appreciative of. The increasing scheduling, uh, more transit that's coming, but he said, one thing I'm really concerned about is I go to the transit stations. And people are openly shooting up there and I don't feel comfortable. And I mentioned that we were gonna have this review tonight to the other commissioners, and I said, we will likely pass this next week. And we expect this not to be happening at the Lakewood Transit Center ever again. So when it comes to the. Section one C. They're gonna be guilty of a misdemeanor, I want to know what teeth we can put in here to add that they may be guilty of a gross misdemeanor. In other words, if they're caught one or more times or referred to prosecution more than once, I want you to have the tools. To be doing something other than ninety days in jail. I want something that has some teeth in it, so they don't come back to Lakewood and consider doing drugs in the public ever again. So that would be my comment.
Thank you.
So I'd like to see some language of what we do to modify that so that we have a step up to a gross misdemeanor.
Mr. Anderson?
Since it's been approximately forty years since I did any criminal law, I asked the city attorney's office to. To opine whether you can escalate an offense based on recidivism. As opposed to having escalated penalties. With respect to a particular offense, so I guess the bottom line there would be, could we make it a gross misdemeanor and then by practice? Ratchet it up. Uh, a judge obviously has the option of, of giving a stiffer sentences. In their discretion as people are, are. Recidivous, uh, repeat offenders, but. I don't know that I've ever seen anything and might just be ignorance where. You can have a misdemeanor for. Offense X and have exactly the same conduct, but have it be a gross misdemeanor because you've done it before, so. Well, the, for the city attorney's office, but I wouldn't mind to see it be a gross misdemeanor, the judge is gonna exercise their discretion down to zero. So, uh, it wouldn't change things other than give them. More coercive effect, I mean.
Well, the reason why I brought it up at one or more is because that's kind of the current law, you have to be found. Uh, at least twice to get referred to some sort of treatment, right? Finally get arrested, so whatever it takes, I think we want to put the maximum teeth we can in legally. So that it gives you adequate discretion to do what you need to do, yes, to be compassionate, but one to set. A strong uh, example. That, you know, you go to Furcrest, you don't speed. Lakewood is really now, or excuse me, Furcrest is really, you don't speed in Furcrest, because there's, there's an atmosphere that you're gonna get caught and get a ticket. I would love to have the reputation Lakewood, you're not gonna be doing drugs in Lakewood, because if you do, you're gonna get caught and you're gonna go to jail. If you get treatment, great, but you're gonna go to jail. So.
Yeah, we. I, I had a follow-up comment on that, but with respect to the. Some of you may not have been aware of this or on the council as long as I have, but. Lakewood had a reputation among the criminals with respect to chases. Uh, if you had a white car behind you, you got, you just kept going, because Tacoma couldn't chase, if you had a dark car behind you, you better pull over, because they're gonna get you. So you might as well not make it worse, uh, and, and it, it's obviously not universal to every, e- e- every offender, but there. You, you're right that that uh. That exists and um, I. I am anxious to see this go forward and, and be enforced. We, although the other, the thing I was gonna follow on with is, uh. With respect to the citations and their furl. Recently in Portland, which is probably the biggest mess on the west coast right now. Uh, one of the um, providers of men, uh, of. Of drug treatment. Uh, to which you were supposed to be referred by the system. In, in advocating for uh, continued funding. Uh, commented that they needed to keep the program going to get. Clients, because nobody had. Come in yet, based on a referral from the police and the little cards that go. I mean, zero, he said, and I thought that was a. Disappointing candid admission, but not unexpected.
Well, I, I just wanna conclude by thanking you, I think you've done yeoman's work on this, I know the officers with whom I've spoken are just anxious to have a tool in the toolbox, so thank you all. For putting this together, and you know, we hear a lot about. The challenges of homelessness and we also hear, uh. Not just anecdotally, but with a certain amount of fact. Proven with good data, that much. Of the homelessness situation around the region is. That there's a drug component to it, a drug addiction component to it. To the extent we can be on the forefront of helping that on the, on the compassion side, hallelujah, because then we'll. We'll set an example for other communities to follow, and we might get ahead on a regional uh, way of. This multi-headed Hydra we're all dealing with here, so. Let's hope this is a step in the right direction and it's enforced. So thanks, you know. All right, so next, Ms. Walker, we're gonna have a. Review of the ordinance related to the protection and preservation of public spaces.
Really hoping you're going back to your kind compassionate self at this point.
My cup is empty.
So, um. Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss. Members of the council, Heidi Walker, city attorney, and this is not our first trip through. How to address this issue. Um, back on October twenty fourth. We, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go ahead and get access to my materials here. What I did was I wanted to have in front of me the um. Amended ordinance so that minus tracking changes, so I can tell you exactly what we've added. Um, what's been added and changed was based on your input at that time and since, and in the memo, what you've got are general areas that were addressed. So the first area that we generally addressed was environmental protection specifically of the watershed. What we're looking to do with this ordinance is recognize the impact that um. Camping without sufficient infrastructure has on our watershed, and so. Um, we copied some other cities and, and tailored it to what we have, some of the questions were, um, are there other? Waters that could be mentioned, and what I was specifically aiming to do with the draft that I produced was. Identify the waters that we have sought to protect already, not come up with new waters. To protect unless they go through that process, so for example, critical areas, shoreline protection, those things. This, instead of this dictating, oh, well, we want to keep. People from camping there, so we're gonna protect those waters, we've already said we're trying to protect these waters, this is just another element in protecting them. The second area is use of public property, and we got a few questions about um, what actually constitutes a public entity. And if you look on um. In the draft of the ordinance, there is a fairly lengthy, at the top of page seventy-seven of your materials. That is a new addition to the ordinance. And what I did was I went into Municipal Reach Research Services Center. And this is actually a listing of every way. That a municipality or governmental entity of any sort is referenced throughout the RCW, it was put together by Hugh Spitzer, who is recognized for his. Work on municipalities and the history of municipalities, so if it seems repetitive, it basically covers every form of public entity one could imagine. And so when we talk about public entities in this ordinance, we're, we mean everybody, we mean the libraries, we mean the school districts, squash dot. Segments of the state, the state itself. Um, the other question that came up was in the next. Not public property, but the next definition after it is store. And so the question was, well, how long does somebody have to leave something in a place in order for it to be stored there? And um, what I recommend here is that we don't focus on a length of time. What we focus on uh, as a defining characteristic is that the items are neither being used nor are they being discarded. And so, so if somebody sets something down, they're clearly not trying to throw it away, they set something down, they leave it there. Perhaps you have observations of police officers saying, well, they wield a um, target cart full, full of items there and, and it appeared to be parked there. Um, they are on public property for the future use by the owner. And this may end up being one of those uh, types of legal arguments to be tested, which will come down to, they know it when they see it. Sort of a thing, so it could be an area that ends up being tested, my concern with trying to put a fixed time on it. It's interesting how people learn those rules very quickly. And the next thing you'll have is if it's a day, you'll have things being stowed in a spot for a day, if it's. Four hours, you'll find things being stowed for four hours, and then how far does one have to move it before you have another four hours somewhere? So um, it's an area that will probably end up being part of a target. If we put this out there, but I think it's better than putting a specific time limit. It turns into a little bit of coyote and Road Runner.
But for the phrase uh, on public property, items not in use and not discarded, it sounds like my family. The way they have junk all over the house.
It is true that many of us have things that are stored in our house for all kinds.
Use, I mean, never get discarded.
Um.
Yeah.
You'll note uh, further down, the other thing that's been changed a little bit, and this is in section six, which in your packet is on page seventy-eight. Um, the part that starts, no person may cause harm to protected waters. It specifically identifies public property abutting the protected waters, it's no longer just any property. And that was something that was meant to address um, a concern that was voiced by council previously. So that's where we are, a lot of this is borrowed from other jurisdictions, but. It is its own unique ordinance because of some of the things that we've tweaked. I do not believe that litigation over these types of ordinances is completely over. Tweaked. I do not believe that litigation over these types of ordinances is completely over. And so it just remains to be defended if it does become subjective challenge. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you. This has come some distance. So thank you very much for that. Any questions, Mr. Anderson?
To the definitions, so. Having. Difficulty reconciling. The broad definition of public entity being included and then public property being limited to which the city has a property interest. Shouldn't that be in which a public entity has property interest?
Correct. And I missed that. I should have had that changed based on your previous input as a council.
Thank you. That's it.
Excellent catch. Thank you, Mr. Boki.
Ms. Walker, one of the, one of the questions that's come up. From folks and in my mind. Page seventy six, section three of the ordinance, available overnight shelter. Says experiencing homelessness at no charge, which must be located within a thirty five mile radius. At the starting point of Lakewood City Hall. Thirty five miles. What? What, where did that come from? What's the significance thirty five miles?
I, I will tell you right now that. Anything that's outside your city limits. Has yet to be tested. And so thirty five miles, five miles, three miles, three point five miles. If you're beyond the city limits of an available bed, that is an area yet to be tested. And one of the things to note is that if you look at the Grants Pass case and the Boise case, those are kind of standalone. Areas, right? They don't have five other cities surrounding them. They're not adjacent to another big city somewhere. It remains to be tested whether or not your beds can be outside of your city. And I think there is a decent argument to be made that it doesn't make a lot of sense for every city. That's part of a municipal cluster, if you will. Every single one of those cities should have to have its own independent facility. If maybe regionally you can do something. More cost effective, but that question is not yet tested. So no, you don't benefit from thirty five miles. Any more or less than you might benefit from something less. And I would say that our police department. Might be interested in something smaller in terms of having to transport people.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like thirty five miles north of here. Takes me to SeaTac or so or more. Takes me into South Seattle. Do I, do I want my police officers to spend two hours driving to take one homeless person? I mean, is that? I guess from a policymaking standpoint, is that, is that a good use of their time? And given that at any time, I, you know, we've got a limited number of officers on, on the road within the city. Spending two hours driving. Doesn't make. I, I think we need to rethink that. I, I think we really do need to have a discussion surrounding that. I. I don't know where all the available beds are, so it's, I would just throwing out numbers would be just that, throwing out numbers. But I, but I do have a. I'm, I'm just trying to figure that in.
If I, if I might, the one other thing to consider. And you hit on it when you said, I don't know where all the available beds are. It may be that right now. You could have to go further to get to beds, depending on how many beds you have available. I did have some discussion with Tiffany Spear, who's here on another matter this evening. And one of the forecasts is that this city would require five hundred beds by twenty forty. Something like that. So I mean, there's, there's this sort of collision force going on between. What are available beds and how far should you have to go to get to one?
Okay. My, my second question is. This kind of more from a general kind of no camping to. Don't. Camp near the water. Wouldn't, wouldn't it be against the law for me to defecate in the water or dump garbage in the water anyway? I, I, I mean, I just find it hard to believe that I could. And or, or maybe we've just said as a society that. It's not okay for everybody else, but it's okay for the homeless to defecate into, into streams and lakes.
It's, it's not that it's okay. It's more that when you're dealing with the occupation of the property, there's a clear artifact. That supports the impact on the water as opposed to having to, for lack of a better term, catch the person.
Okay.
Doing.
So this is just the sent hence the, the within two hundred feet. Okay, okay.
The assumption is if there's no infrastructure and it's clear that somebody is. Living on the land that's adjacent to the water without the infrastructure, that stuff is going somewhere.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bransdottir, did you have a comment about artifacts?
I have some concerns about the timing of adopting the ordinance before we really have a good handle on. Are there? Shelter beds. Available to us to use. In the enforcement of this ordinance. Anywhere. You know, we don't, in other words, I, I, I'd at least, you know, you know, if we. Talked. I, I mean, even Aspen Court, are they? Willing to say that they would accept someone that. We refer their. Using this ordinance to do that. You know, they have an intake procedure now where. We occasionally can, can take people there and they say, no, we won't accept them. For a variety of. Variety of reasons that include the person needing to sign an agreement to certain rules and things. It isn't a strictly a no cost thing. And I guess I'd like to. Know whether or not the, you know, the rescue mission, Lehigh. Other places that provide shelters in Tacoma or that. You know, would actually accept. Someone that we're, we're, we're looking to force into shelter. I mean, that's what we're trying to do to force into shelter. Using, 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 using this ordinance. So how far down that road are we?
Well. Ms. Spear, who is. Very helpful for these sorts of things has indicated that per her sources, the mission served three hundred and twenty five. Unduplicated clients from the city of Lakewood and expect to hit that number again this year. And that being said. One of the points you're hitting on is the question of low or no barrier shelters. And the courts have opined on the question of shelters that require you to. Accept certain faith. And said that those beds do not count. And so then the question becomes as this thing gets litigated further along is. If you have barrier shelters, meaning a shelter that. Requires you to be sober, for example, or something like that. That may or may not pass the test for them. It, it is conceivable to say that where the courts will go with this is to say that you must have. A place for a person to sleep regardless of their condition. Because the alternative for that person, and I'm talking about the court's perspective, what the courts have been saying. The alternative is that, that what are they supposed to do other than sleep on the street? If there is no other option. And so if you offer, for example, a faith-based bed. The courts are saying that's not another option. And the question becomes what other types of bed would the court view as not a true available bed?
Okay, I, I, and I guess I can see where there are circumstances where the court may say that's not an option. That meets their definition. It doesn't necessarily mean it's not an option we can offer, but it just, but it's just that we can't say. This is the option in lieu of going to jail. The ordinance doesn't seem to speak about. If a police officer encounters someone camping in front of the city hall. About how much time do you give them? To move as opposed to, you only have two options. You either go to a shelter or I arrest you. Is there an option to relocate?
Arguably, you could have the person move along. The proper step in that would be to seek some form of a trespass. Against the person and it would be trespassing them from public property, which gets thorny. Now, if you're trespassing them from, for example, it was referenced in the previous presentation, that there was an agency agreement. With the clinic where the pictures were taken on South Tacoma Way. You have an agency agreement with the owner. The owner says, I do not want these folks here. Then you can remove them by, by virtue of what the owner wants to have done. Public property is much trickier that way.
So would. As we are speaking about public. Property. The ordinance doesn't specify if the person doesn't move along within. Thirty minutes, okay, or, or, or establish a standard. But. I can envision a police officer having a conversation with someone where the person says, well, I'll move. But they've got. A bunch of stuff, so it's going to, moving isn't a matter of just standing up and walking away. That, that, is there a way to. Codify a time or something in that, that, that you have to, a person needs to, to move. Before they're faced with being. The two options that are in the ordinance.
What I would tell you is that I don't think it's. I don't think it's as much about moving the person. When you say they've got all that stuff to move, I would say, is that stuff being stored there? They obviously aren't using it. They obviously aren't discarding it. The stuff has to go. The person can choose to follow the stuff or not follow the stuff, but the stuff has to go. Now, having said that, there are rulings that this stuff. Amounts to someone's home, even if it's in a shopping cart. And we do have some responsibilities as far as providing notification. So that they can choose to take action of some sort, but they don't have a right under this ordinance to store anything on the public property.
In the definition of public entity. In. And in the revised statement of where in the next paragraph, public property is defined when where an entity has. A proprietary interest. I'm trying to see where federal property fits into that definition. It, 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 everything is referenced to state agencies, state municipal corporations, a whole long list of state things. It says things that are defined by the state in that way to be able to go and do that. And we have some instances in the city of. Federal. Federal property or federal, these property work, federal agencies have. Have rented it and are doing that. If that could be looked at to make sure that we're. Being as, as inclusive and. At the same thing, is it, is it intentional and necessary to exclude tribal property?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we don't exclude the feds. The feds exclude us. They, they are truly, especially if you're talking about the tribes, they are a sovereign nation. They aren't. They aren't anything that we would have control over. There's a disagreement from someone who's practicing this area.
We, we, we have a, an agreement with this squally tribe to provide. Police services with respect to the squally mark because it's so far removed from the tribal center. So that may have some bearing on this.
And, and actually that was the thing I was going to.
Not on, not necessarily on whether the ordinance applies, which it does not, but whether we might. Be required to enforce something that they want to.
Correct. You can get something through diplomacy. With the tribes, but, but you cannot simply. Sweep them into your jurisdiction. So this is scheduled to come back before you on Monday.
My, my concern with the, with the ordinance right now is that we're not. Fully prepared. To do this. That. How did you, would you envision a police officer tonight encountering someone? Knowing that there is an available shelter bed within thirty five miles or whatever number we settle on.
That there is an available bed?
Yeah.
That he would try, he or she, the officer, would try to figure out which is the closest available shelter bed. They would ask the person if they're willing to go to that shelter. It might be the mission. It might be Aspen Court. It doesn't, they don't have to drive thirty five miles. That's the radius in which if they can find a bed, they're good to go. The person's agreeable, they go. If the person doesn't agree, then they can be arrested.
So I guess the sequence that you're envisioning is having our police officers in. Are they first supposed to encounter a person? And then seek to determine if there's a shelter bed? Or are they at the beginning of their shift? Expected to know that tonight there is, there are shelter beds somewhere. Okay, and, 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 or conversely, that tonight there are none. And, and, you know, that. So that they don't get put into that really awkward situation of where they. Dealing with trying to tell a person, you've got to go to a shelter bed to be able to do that. And the person says yes, and then they say, well, I can't find one. You know, you don't, don't, I don't think we want that situation. And. And maybe that's not in the ordinance. But it certainly is. Something that the police chief in his responsibility to where. You know, he's supposed to establish. Policy and procedures and things to be able to go and do that. But I'm concerned that right now. If, if we were to say, well. We think the most likely beds. Are at Aspen Court. But that. They're not there every day. We're going to end up with. Two. Situations that are, in my view, not desirable. One is. We're going to enforce it on Tuesday and Friday this week, but we, but there aren't going to be beds on the other days. Or. We're going to get into the situation of there's one bed. And now we're going to have the police department selectively get to choose. Which person they find. To. To enforce the ordinance on while there may be a number of people, even a number of people in the same location. That they can't. Accommodate. So, yeah, you know, I'm not sure until we, we really got an understanding about what we're really going to be asking the police. Chief and the police officers to do. That we're ready to put this ordinance out there. With the assumption then that it's going to accompany it in the community that. We're now, we're now in a position to move, to move all these people on. Because we won't be.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
All due respect, Councilmember Bransdottir, I couldn't disagree more. I don't think we can do this fast enough. Eighty percent of the people that are visibly homeless, sleeping on the street, have a drug issue. Eighty percent of the people who are visibly. Eighty percent of the people who are visibly homeless and sleeping on the street say no. When uh, there's efforts at uh, moving them out of encampments, they don't want to come in. This is in large part a tool to move them on to somewhere else to make our community safer. We offer them help if they don't take it. They leave or they go to jail. Uh, there are available shelter beds in Pierce County every night. Not just at Aspen Court Tacoma Rescue Mission, but other places. There's a coordinated entry system, you dial two one one, you talk to. Catholic Community Services to Associated Ministries to Comprehensive Life Services. They all have the key to the shelter beds. And so there's presently available space, there's pleasantly presently a way to find out where and how much is available. Uh, there is an issue as to what barriers there are, and sometimes that's the reason somebody doesn't want to come in. Uh, if they have, uh, you know, a dog. Uh, there are. There's a system in place for taking the dog, but they want to have them with it, we'll go to the shell, go into the shelter with it. Uh, they want their buddy to be in the same room. Uh, there are a variety of objections, but they don't bear on the current state of the law. Which, by the way, is almost unique to the Ninth Circuit. So, uh, as these things become more and more ridiculous on the West Coast, you don't see them in other. Uh, frankly, in in liberal blue cities in other parts of the country. They don't have this problem because they don't have the goofy laws that come out of the Ninth Circuit and. And even stranger political attitudes that come out of California. Uh, so we have the tools now and the right now our police are talking to people and trying to move them along. And they do that successfully, they offer, in some cases, they offer them help, they behavioral health teams have gone out. Um, this is a tool to frankly, it's helper the highway. Uh, and highways, the sec, really the unwritten second option. The first option's help, second option's highway, if you won't take you to one of those, there's the ability to take you to jail, which gets you to take. A or B instead of C. So, uh. I I'm confident we won't have, we won't have a problem. Because I think Seattle was running twenty two percent vacancy rate in its homeless shelter in its temporary shelters. While people on the street are there because they know they're waiting for something better. They're waiting for an apartment because the governor has promised them an apartment. Because they're on DOT land, so till I get my apartment, I'm not coming in. I would, it's, it's, it's just, we continue to enable these things. We do a disservice to our law abiding citizens and we do disservice to people who. As one homeless advocate, an unnamed former head of a housing authority, which told me. Living under a blue tarp, we allow them to die with their rights on. Uh, it's just not a, not sustainable, so I want to do this early and often.
What was the twenty two percent vacancy rate north of the county line, maybe the radius is forty five miles? That's. And an Uber card, that's forty, by the way. So. Any any other questions, comments? Uh, I echo Mr. Anderson's comments, I think we're. At the point where we need to do something as opposed to nothing. You know, at at most, if we felt we needed to have some education. And protocol in place. Where the officers on shift as they enter the ship to figure out what beds are available that evening in order to refer folks. You know, you could look at section twelve and extend the effective date from thirty days to forty five or sixty if. The department felt they needed more time for implementation, but I think passing the ordinance is something that is topical and ready.
This will come back to you on Monday night for consideration.
Great. Very good, thank you. Next, we will turn to a twenty twenty four comprehensive periodic review update on housing. For this, we have our strategic planning manager, Tiffany Spear.
Thank you and good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, this is actually going to cover more than just the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan amendment process. We're going to be talking about things that are happening this year, things will be incorporated into the twenty four amendment process and then things that. May happen in twenty four or may happen at some nebulous point in the future. Um, you do have in your packet, starting at page eighty one, a presentation. However, it's been updated since because some of the things involved in this presentation tonight. Are in consideration in Olympia right now, and obviously those bills are very fluid, so. Um, I will be covering some things that are not in your packet materials. Uh, this, if you will recall, there was a request at the end of last year that uh, we bring this information about the twenty twenty four process to the commi- uh, council. Periodically throughout the next two years, so tonight is the first night we'll be talking about housing. But you'll see there is a schedule through this year and into mid next year, a number of other topics that we'll be bringing to you uh, bit by bit. And so this will be basically letting you know well ahead of time what's being considered at a high level. And then, starting next spring, uh, we'll be able to give you some more details, little sneak peeks of draft language that's actually been. Um, floated through public engagement first and foremost, but also through our planning commission. And then the council will start the full review of the twenty four. Complete review of the comprehensive plan and associated development regulations on June twenty fourth if the schedule holds. So just graphically speaking, here we are, we're talking about again, some things that are coming in front of the planning commission and then yourselves in twenty three, based on state law. Then there are changes in twenty twenty four that are also state law required, but then there's going to be a little more option. Uh, and discussion for the city council ultimately for the big comprehensive plan periodic review. And then again, there's some possible new requirements that I'm going to cover uh, pretty briefly. So in twenty twenty three, um, there's a few things that the city needs to update its zoning, uh, allowed uses. And development regulations that up that relate to them. First of all, in uh, the first column there, you'll see what it is. To the right, you'll see whether it's HB twelve twenty, House Bill twelve twenty. Or an RCW or a piece of the GMA itself that says why this has to be done. And then the final column is just explaining that this will be part of the twenty three comprehensive plan process. So first of all, it's going to be that review, not only anymore of just the total amount of housing to plan for. Between now and twenty forty four, in this cycle's case. But also looking at it per, uh, I'll call it income band, but is basically looking at, uh, I'm sorry. Rewind, this is, excuse me, this is for permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency and emergency shelter. These are all required by state statute. And um, these are things that really there's no leeway in terms of the city doing or not. Where there is some leeway is in the type of um, conditions and requirements that are placed in these types of housing. The other piece to this is to allow foster care facilities in the city, right now our code is completely silent on that. And then again, there'll be development regulations that have to go into uh, this amendment process as well to be consistent with policy. So this chart you'll see in yellow, the area where you'll see some changes proposed this year. The letter P in a particular square means something is permitted and the letter C means it would be conditionally permitted. If the square is empty, that means it's not permitted. So the bluer, um, three first columns for permanent supportive, rapid rehousing and transitional housing, that's where it's already allowed by city code. State law now requires that those types of housing also be allowed anywhere a hotel is allowed, so that's why you see. Commercials one, two, and three zones down at the bottom having it being added. And then right now, our our code in zoning is silent on emergency housing, emergency shelter and foster care. So these are all being added again um, this time around, and as you'll see for emergency housing and shelter, the permitting or conditional. Uh, regulations are reflecting the same requirements as the other three that are already there. Foster care is allowing it anywhere um, you see listed there without the conditions because it is primarily a a single family residential type of use. Where there's uh, so much other requirement and regulation, the city doesn't see the need to add conditional uses to that.
What's the? What are the definitions under emergency housing and emergency shelter? Is emergency defined?
Yes, those two terms are both deter- um, defined now in state statute, and so that's the definitions we'll be picking out. And I I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me tonight. And unless there's other questions, that's all that I was going to cover for what's coming in front of the commission and then yourselves later this year as part of the twenty three process. If there's no other questions, I'll jump into the bigger twenty four conversation. All right, okay, and this is where I had started to go at the beginning. Uh, now, under House Bill twelve twenty, which was passed in uh, two years ago now. There is a requirement not only to plan for a total growth target, but there is now a requirement to look at current and projected housing needs. For the various area median income levels that you see in the chart. So extremely low, very low, low and moderate, and each of those are a range of area median income households. Looking at this, it's identifying the number of needs of of units needed, so keep that in mind. Then just documenting whether there is sufficient land capacity for all of those segments of the population. Looking at barriers in the regulation or other limitations and then identifying programs and actions. That have potential to overcome those barriers. So as we get into this a little bit further, there's a. An analysis that's happening here now through the Department of Commerce, it's going to conclude a slightly different number than the city's adopted growth target. And so the way we are seeing this now, and it is very much a moving target. Uh, is there's a requirement to hit the uh, growth target. But this is an identify and assess, not a you will use this absolute number as of tonight, Monday night, March thirteenth, twenty twenty three, that may well change. Um, looking at uh, some of the results out of the city's housing needs assessment, which was recently gotten to about an eighty five percent completion. Um, there were a couple of different graphics and calculations made to see if Lakewood can realistically meet its twenty twenty, oh, sorry, twenty forty four housing target. Which was adopted by the Pierce County Council in twenty twenty two. And that total number of housing units needed is thirty six thousand seven hundred and thirteen. If you look at starting in twenty twenty two and going to twenty forty four, you'll see the dotted line is significantly uh, higher from year to year. Than past uh, housing production rates, and so. The assessment is just making the obvious point here based on uh, the calculation that the speed at which the city is having housing produced within it. Uh, needs to go up significantly in order to meet meet the growth target. Also, out of the housing needs assessment, um, because of the way that the city developed prior to incorporation primarily. Um, that's going to be redevelopment where all of this happens, it's not going to be finding green space and building uh, on those. The capacity for future growth is also in the multifamily areas, so while. Uh, and much of the city's acreage is in what are called R one, two, three, or four zones, and actually a full quarter of the city's acreage is in R three. Uh, most of the capacity is in multifamily areas, and so that. That is something to think about and where I was talking about options before for the city council. Um, taking actually a look at what it, what is zoned what? And how that changes where future capacity can be found and future redevelopment might occur. Uh, also probably not a surprise to you, there is a potential for displacement of lower income residents, we'll go into that in more detail shortly. Um, and then also that not only will there need to be multifamily housing for low and extremely low income, there will also need to be some for higher income. And if you think about those that may want to downsize or maybe just simply don't want a single family detached house, they want something else. There's not a lot of options within the city regardless of income level. So the assessment is saying not only the low income construction needs to happen, but the higher market rate does as well. Another item is that uh, about sixty percent of the housing need for Lakewood is at eighty percent of AMI or below. Meaning, yes, there will need to be significant construction of this type of housing in order to comply with this new uh, requirement under HB twelve twenty. There are policies right now in the comprehensive plan that talk about a limit. On um, housing for those making eighty percent of below at twenty five percent, which is about half of what the need is now showing. So there will need to be some conversation about amendments to policy.
Mr. Branster. The, I I understand the fifty nine percent is a new number that is. Come out of Olympia. It it it's so it's it's not something that has its origin in the Puget Sound Regional Council or the Pierce County. Um, and is. Is that number based on someone analyzing? Our current population? And saying in the next twenty years, we're going to have the same percentage of low income people that we do now, even though we grow?
Uh, Councilmember Branster, this is one of the areas that's very fluid right now, there's two options that have been developed by the Department of Commerce. Under House Bill twelve twenty, and ultimately it's going to be a conversation by the Pierce County Regional Council. And possibly the Pierce County Council to decide what. Which option will be taken by all of the cities in the county about these um, growth targets by or or. Housing needs by income band. And what they have done is take a look at. Current need, meaning um. There's not enough housing units being built in any city, not just Lakewood, for what is perceived to be the need right now. There's also the projected growth from the Office of Financial Management as well as um, calculations that are done through PSRCs, uh, different tools. And then they also take a look at the fact that there are some housing units that are second homes, vacation homes. They're just not going to be available, they'll be taken down. And that is where some of the difference now is coming between the twenty forty four growth target that was adopted recently and what commerce is doing. They're saying there's other units that just for whatever reason can't be considered a primary residence. And so all of that is taken into account when they find, come to that uh, fifty nine percent.
So I guess is that that fifty nine percent? A unique percentage to Lakewood?
Yes, this calculation is specifically to Lakewood.
They've decided that. Uh, other communities don't need to plan for as many low income people as we do?
No, there may be some that are actually higher than that, the the this is just the result specific to Lakewood, they have done a countywide assessment. There's each city is having to do their own housing needs assessment under HB twelve twenty. And as those um, city level assessments happen, you may find either an identical or a completely different result, city by city.
So we have some potential to. Make the case to change that number.
Um, the needs assessment isn't one really to change, it is. The conversation will be at the Pierce County Regional Council and then County Council. Whether the commerce recommended numbers are going to be adopted as is, or if there are going to be um, some response to that or some pushback to say. Here's why we don't agree with those numbers. But literally last week is when commerce released the the results.
So is this something that in your view is is a. A requirement that's going to get massaged over years? Or is it something that we've got to be massaged before the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan change?
The latter, what's happening right now is that uh, at the Growth Management Coordinating Committee level, so the staff level that recommends to the PCRC. There is a subcommittee that's taking a look at what commerce released as this new income band results. Looking at the twenty forty four growth targets that were already adopted and saying, what are we going to do about this, how to, how can they be justified, or, excuse me, how can they be reconciled? If they can be, and then it'll be up to the PCRC to decide next steps. But the way this is supposed to work is that the numbers that you're seeing here from commerce's tool. Do be incorporated into the twenty twenty four adoption of uh, compliance amendments.
Okay, I guess I'm I'm concerned that there is an effort by commerce to steer future low income. Population growth. To cities like Lakewood and steer it away from some other locations. Um, but I guess we'll have to see how that works out, thank you.
So and 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 maybe I'm moving ahead, if I don't know if this slide still exists. So should I wait until you talk to method A and method B, because I think method B does exactly what he just said. Okay.
Yeah, I I feel the same way.
feel the same way. It's like, keep Lakewood more. I mean, it's steering, steering it away from the political vortex of, of Seattle and saying, we, we need Puget Sound low income housing, but let's, let let's not diversify the neighborhoods and outlying areas. Let's make them our low income housing areas, so, so they aren't our neighbors. And I think that has such a political bad taste if stated accurately that we can frankly ignore this.
I, yeah, I, 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 I will tell you right now. Sun rises in the east, sets in the west. If the PCRC gets to decide between method A and method B, they're going to decide on method B. The smaller towns are not going to accept the idea that share of growth at all income levels, they're going to want to say each jurisdiction will have the same percentage share of their total housing supply at each income level, one twenty-four, forty-four. That's the one they're going to pick. That's just how it goes. I mean, i- it's unworkable to try to, unless we get to decide which one we're going to do. If, if it's, if, if some regional authority gets it, it's unworkable and we're the losers. We're just flat out. And I would argue in this age of equity that we talk about constantly, that, that is an inequitable result.
I will just say before moving on, and, and we will, Councilmember Bokey, get to that um information, that this housing needs assessment is part of state statute. It's something the city is required to do, and it's now, as I said, about eighty-five, ninety percent done. And then what Commerce has done is also state law from House Bill twelve twenty. And the language in the statute, sorry, the statute that came out of House Bill twelve twenty is that um local governments shall use the countywide numbers that come from the Commerce Department. What that means from county to city to city, the full distribution, um, that's going to be that conversation at the PCRC and then the County Council. So here we go, just a, a quick summary comparing our twenty forty-four growth target to what happened with the most recent version of Commerce's calculation. There is a slightly higher number of units um targeted to the city of Lakewood, and again, this goes back to this assumption made about uh the vacation homes, second homes, those homes that aren't going to be used, or I should say units, um, that aren't going to be used for primary uh residents, and that's why our number went from ninety-seven fourteen to ten thousand thirty-six. But again, this is something that is in, very much in flux, and actually uh we'll be talking about it. The GMCC will be bringing an informational piece to the PCRC about this on Thursday night. Uh, okay, so Councilmember Bokey and members of the council, here you go. This is uh an updated version of what was in your packet. But you'll see as of March eighth, which is what Commerce provided, um, and if you go across the top of each table, it shows uh the number of units required by twenty forty-four broken out by area median income. So you see zero to thirty percent either being permanent supportive housing or non, and then thirty to fifty, fifty to eighty, eighty to a hundred, hundred to one twenty, and then higher than that. And then you also see the number of emergency housing units. So this um in some ways reflects on what was just being discussed by the city attorney with you about the number of units that the city is supposed to have. Um, right now, the two methods either say four hundred and seventy-two emergency housing units or six hundred and forty-nine by the year twenty forty-four. What you see in method A, as Councilmember Bokey was just saying, is it's defined to be all jurisdictions will get the same share of growth at each income level that the countywide share was assigned to be. And then method B is each jurisdiction has the same share of their total housing supply at each income level. And what you see in method B for Lakewood is that the two red numbers, those negative numbers are indicating that there's already a quote surplus of housing units available at that income level within the city. So when you move forward to twenty forty-four, the percentage or the, the raw number in this case of um units in that economic segment, so thirty to fifty and then fifty to eighty, would actually be a smaller share by twenty forty-four of the total housing stock. And I think where you get the fourteen eighty-five number, as the council knows, there is a, a large stock of existing affordable housing uh in the city of Lakewood, that is, uh whether it's older stock or however long ago it was constructed. This is now being uh preserved through the rental housing safety program. These units are for affordable uh levels now, and, and the city hopes to keep them as a primary tool for affordable housing. But what you also see is at both ends of the spectrum, you have about uh twenty-eight hundred units being identified for zero to thirty percent. But then you also have forty-nine hundred units at a hundred and twenty percent and above. And so again, this is talking about both ends of the economic segments for Lakewood are looking for additional units. And uh the capacity, as we, I, I mentioned earlier, is in multifamily, so where are those multifamily units going to be built? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. The last thing I'll say, and I don't know right off the top of my head how this will affect planning long term, but just to note that the area median income being mentioned in all of this stuff from Commerce and in state law is the county's area median income. City of Lakewood's income is about twenty-seven percent lower than that. So actually, the planning here would translate into a different AMI within the city of Lakewood. Um, and so you may actually have some additional market rate units that, that private developers can build and still meet the state law. So just something to keep in mind.
So housing is by the state's definition going to be based on who's living there now? Not who wants to live there? And it's going to be based on the income level of the people here already? So you're going to build more housing of the same? It seems like the ratios are perpetuating what you have if you follow it. Yeah, but that's, I mean, a different, it has to. It seems like there's a push to rate you where you are as opposed to where you, you want to be.
So House?
A few things. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say, don't shoot the messenger on this because we're having, we've had a lot of difficulty about how we're going to present this to the city council. There's a lot of moving parts and it's complicated. One of the things that we will be looking at later this year is an amendment to the multifamily tax exemption. And we will be establishing what the median household income that you want to use for Lakewood. You can use the Lakewood version. You can use the Pierce County version. Or you can use the version that's used for the Greater Seattle Bellevue Tacoma Metro version, which will take you to ninety thousand plus. That gives you some opportunities if you want to, to uh use that tool to determine what level of income you want to use for provision for affordable housing. You can go with the lower levels, or you can go with the higher numbers. But that's going to be a, a big issue of debate. We're planning on taking that to the Planning Commission later this year and bringing that forward to the city council. That's one topic. The other issue is how do we plan for this AMI? If we're supposed to build say, for example, one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven non-permanent supportive housing units, how are we going to do that in the future? Are we going to allow the private market to do that? Or are we going to, is the city going to require some sort of mandatory inclusionary housing? Or make it voluntary inclusionary housing? And we have done that in the past. So there, there are some interesting elements here, but how do we get there? What level of economic tools do we want to use? So there's a lot of questions here we don't have answers to, and it gets even a little bit more cumbersome as we look at the twenty twenty-three legislation with some of the bills that are being proposed. So, so those are some of the topics that are on the back of my mind as we go through this process and we start talking about how to construct low and moderate income housing into the future. Am I helping here, Mr. Mayor? Yep.
Questions?
All right, so uh this was just a little bit more on the allocation methods A or B, and at the bottom you'll see um method A is requiring higher in everything from zero to eighty percent AMI and then less units from eighty to a hundred percent plus. Method B is a lower number of units between zero and eighty percent AMI and higher numbers from eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. So as uh Councilmember Bokey mentioned, this is actually, I think, the easier goal for the city of Lakewood. I don't know if this is uh the same holds true for all of the jurisdictions across the county, but that is the result that we see um comparing the two methods for Lakewood specifically. So, um, that's just the number based on area median income as assumed in growth targeting by um Department of Commerce, by the Office of Financial Management. Now we're jumping into the other thing that's being required, the other big thing that's being required by HB twelve twenty, which is looking at racially disparate impacts, risk of displacement and exclusion in housing. And that includes taking a look at zoning, disinvestment and infrastructure availability. The second part of that is to establish policies or regulations to address any impacts that are found. The third is to show the areas, identify the areas where there's the highest risk of displacement in the city. And then also just uh creating anti-displacement policies that are appropriate to the jurisdiction. Why are we doing this? Again, HBA twelve twenty as well as Growth Management Act overall. And then how this is being done, it's the twenty twenty-four complement process, and also many of these findings are uh included in our housing needs assessment. Some highlights out of the housing needs assessment. There is a disproportionate number of extremely low black or African-American households compared to other uh races or ethnicities in the city. Black or African-American renters face significant cost burdens. There's fewer Hispanic or Latino households with above median income. And there is a significant lack of ownership across all households of color. The largest risk of displacement, the, in geographic terms, in the city are in the east and southern parts. There's also a critical focus on anti-displacement for the Lakewood Station District and Lakeview Kendrick. And that, it's also important to remember that displacement also applies to businesses. So um while we're also talking individuals and housing, we are talking businesses too. The housing uh assessment just demonstrates uh we're at about forty-eight percent in Lakewood of white alone, fifty-two percent BIPOC. The number of households by race and household income here, the red is the extremely low, and then you get to the darker blue is uh above median income. And if you compare, for instance, black or African-American to white alone, you would see proportionately speaking, um, as was said earlier on that slide, the disproportionate impact for black or African-American uh realities. And then also what you see is um some differences among the communities of color, how they are uh faring in the city. No surprise here, I don't think geographically, but again, taking a look at where the higher risk for um social vulnerability, which is um poverty rates, unemployment, adults without house, high school diplomas, um, single parent households, uh populations with disabilities, um minority status and or people that speak English less than well. Crowding in households, households with no vehicles, et cetera. And so you've got uh Tillicum Woodbrook, Springbrook, Lakeview, Montevista, and some of the other areas on the eastern side of the city is the higher risk areas. This is also a displacement risk map developed uh by PSRC in this case, and again, it's those same areas, no surprise. Um, people of color, English language skills, the uh transportation access, proximity to community businesses and public services, and then housing. All of this, again, is something that may be addressed to some extent with um the zoning choices that the city uh might address over the next year, year and a half. The HEAL map, the Health uh Environmental Disparities map, once more, same areas of the city, looking at uh the socio-economic factors and where the risks are highest. And then some of these maps might be similar to you. This is actually something that came to you as part of the tree uh code this last year, but it's showing that you've got um environmental inequities as well. The tree um equity score, meaning lack of trees or, or presence of trees, the percentage of urban tree canopy, where the people of color are, uh, and where low employment uh census block groups are. And then this is a, a study that was recently done by, I believe it was UW and then Eastern Washington University regarding racial covenants. Again, this is all pre-incorporation to the city of Lakewood, but nevertheless, there were eighteen subdivisions and nine hundred and twenty-eight parcels identified as having racially restrictive covenants, um which were no longer considered uh legal as of nineteen sixty-nine, but there are um certainly some of these still on the books. And so from what I understand, actually, the city council's looking at maybe doing something uh with a resolution or something, just to bring people's attention to this and the fact that they can go to the county auditor and get these removed off of their uh deeds if they wish. There's no cost to do that. But you can see where these are in the city. Um, mostly east of the lakes. One note that's also kind of interesting, given the relationship with JBLM or Fort Lewis and McCord, is that in nineteen seventy, one-third of the county's black population were military. Most lived in Hilltop. And then a quarter of the Asian and Latino people in the county were also stationed at the military base at that point. So as we get into land use zoning, um, this is the rainbow of colors current zoning within the city of Lakewood. Simplified a little bit, this is the area where residential of some kind is allowed, whether it's single family or multifamily. So um that white part of the area uh of the city to the east, that's where you've got a public institutional and um industrial zoning, but then you also have the air corridors and clear zone just north of McCord Field. If you look at the various zones by acreage, again, residential zones are about half of the city. Next largest uh category is parks and open space. And then you see the smaller um amounts for commercial, industrial, public, institutional, et cetera. Central Business District, that is the downtown subarea, that's about two point seven percent of the city, but that is where quite a bit of growth, both housing and businesses is targeted. Breaking down the residential zones a little bit more, you see that the R one and R two zones, which are up to two point two units per acre, is about eight point six percent of the city. Most of the city, a quarter of the city's uh residential capacity is in R three, which is about four point eight units per acre. But that is where the housing needs assessment said there's only eight percent of capacity for future growth. And as a result, you're looking down further into the multifamily zones, the mixed residential zones, and then even some of the commercial zones where housing is allowed at higher densities, that's where about eighty percent of your capacity is going to be uh for future growth. Assuming no zoning changes occur, or no density changes in the various zones occurs. So uh this is a little bit repetitive, but just once more, um, looking at the Buildable Lands Report now, there was capacity for the amount of growth targeted to Lakewood, but it is in infill and redevelopment, it's in multifamily zoning and uses. Um, and uh zone, the R three zone, which is about a quarter of the city, is only eight percent of capacity uh available within that zone. This is somewhat, again, repetitive, but just defines for anyone who's interested about what underutilized vacant or vacant single unit means, that's all defined there. Most of it, as you see, eight hundred and, or sorry, eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine units are on underutilized parcels. So things that you could add a second unit to, whether it's detached or attached, or even more than that. So what we're looking at right now as part of the twenty twenty-four process is to allow additional types of housing within um R one, R two, R three, R four, mixed residential one and two, looking at duplexes, triplexes and townhomes, dropping those into those uh various zones within the city um with significantly increased capacity within each of those zones. And so um again, this is a high-level review. You're going to get a lot more detail about this going down the road, but we just wanted to give you a heads up. That's um for sure what's going to be coming in front of you, but there may be other things as well. for sure, what's going to be coming in front of you, but there may be other things as well. Now we get into possibilities and we don't know exactly where these bills are going to fall. We've still got a few more weeks of the session and things move around and change. However, there is a House Bill eleven ten, kind of codenamed the middle housing bill. And as you see on the bottom in the blue text, it is going even further than what twelve twenty has done so far. And it's saying that at least two units on all lots zoned residential, at least four within a half mile of major, of a major transit stop. And then also looking at maybe setting aside one unit for affordable housing equals we get more density. Twelve forty five is another potential. And this is talking about how you can or are required to allow lot splitting, provided they are a certain size and that it's not one that's already been split. And then the types of regulations that a jurisdiction can impose or not impose on one of those split lots, including parking requirements. The third one here is fifty four sixty six, and this is related now to development and the type of density that is allowed or required near a transit stop. And what that may mean within the city of Lakewood, we need to flesh out a little better. You've got the Sounder Station, obviously, but then you also have the Pierce County Transit Center within the downtown. And you've got the Park and Ride, and you also have BRT routes maybe in the future. So this is still subject to change. So in summary, one more time, you've got things in twenty three that will be coming before you shortly. Next, over the next year, a little over a year, you'll be seeing these changes we've talked about tonight, coupled with some other recommendations that may come from the work done by our public engagement process as well as our planning commission. The draft element and regulations will be in front of you starting next spring. And what we are going to try to do, if it's possible, is if these bills being talked about right now in this session do pass, go ahead and try to incorporate them into this twenty four process, even if the due date to comply with them is later, just to be able to address this all at once. Otherwise, we're going to be asking the public to chew on this topic over and over and over again. And so we're going to try to do our best to have all of these things incorporated into one conversation next spring and summer. We do have our steering committee for the twenty four process in place. You'll see the names of those that attended the first meeting. There were some that were not able to attend, but you have utilities. You have affordable housing advocates and organizations. You have private business. And you have different ethnic and cultural groups also represented. So we'll continue to grow that group over time. But they are meeting at least monthly and will be providing recommendations to the planning commission when the time is right.
So I have a question there. Who who determined the makeup of the committee?
What we did as a city was reached to out to the state. There's a couple of agencies that track what are called community-based organizations and got names from them and coupled that also with groups that we have worked with over time at the city for a variety of different items.
Who determined the makeup of the committee? Are there designated elements of the committee that are required by state law? Is this a staff decision as to how who gets to be on the committee, both from a category and an individual's standpoint? Who determines on who's on that committee?
What we tried to do, Councilmember Anderson, is go as wide as we could based on the commerce requirements, which does say you need to contact community-based organizations. So we tried to have at least two there for that. This did not come in front of the council for appointment. This was a
No, I you're not answering my question.
I'm not understanding your question.
Okay. What does the state require as to the makeup of the committee? And what did the city through staff determine should be included in the makeup committee? I'm unclear on where the makeup of the committee comes from.
The state requires community-based organization involvement, not exclusively, but they want you to have at least multiple groups that represent
Is 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 that what it says, multiple groups of community?
It says community-based organizations plural.
Okay, and that is that it's not exclusive, though?
Correct. And that's why what you have up there is Tacoma Power, Puget Sound Energy, private business owner, and then Rebuilding South Sound and Lhasa also being there.
I I don't see anyone from that actually creates any housing there. I don't see a developer. I don't see anybody from MBA. I don't see anybody that's a builder. I don't see anybody from a union that's involved in in housing. What I see are all with the exception of the private business owner is people who either tax or ask government for contributions. And that's going to come out with a very slanted viewpoint.
What I can do is do follow up with you, Mr. Anderson, and members of the council of everybody that was invited. And then these are the ones that attended the first meeting. The list that we provided to invite was probably twenty five to thirty different organizations.
Yeah, I I understand that. I'm not criticizing process, except that we need, I think we need to recruit a more balanced group. And the people who either tax or come to the government for money are extremely reliable, well represented, because when you ask those groups to show up, they show up because they have an interest in getting something from government, not helping guide government to a better decision. So becoming more and more cynical with age and experience. And so I, but I'd like to see somebody on here who has actually has some expertise with respect to housing. And I don't consider organizations that built six hundred thousand dollar a unit housing as being very effective at that. So that's what I'm concerned about.
We are continuing to invite people and grow this group. This isn't the final list. And so as time goes by and we bring the other topics to you, and it's about every six week process, I think, through the rest of this year, you'll see the names and organizations expand. And that is my presentation for you this evening, unless you have any other questions.
Obviously. Going on. Sounds like the down at the legislature, though, there's a lot of push for increased densification. I think we have a rep from master builders or the realtors back there. I think they're pushing for increased densification as well.
Yep. I I think you may well see eleven ten, if not some of those other bills come forward, and it's going to take additional discretion away from cities. Quite frankly, it's going to be you shall do this. And so it's a matter of the city deciding how it wants to comply with what's becoming more and more of a mandate.
What might be good? It's great to bring council along with this process. It's going to be really important for us to have some information on the website as these events unfold, because it's difficult to explain. I mean, the casual person who meets me in Starbucks beats us up about why are you forcing density down our throats? And it's a challenge to explain to them. It ain't us, right? It's important to be clear in the information flow. Yeah.
Just two things. What what the state's proposing makes this whole process more complex. It doesn't make it any easier. And the other piece I would say is is one of the things that we're looking at, if one ten passes, it's just basically creating one single family zone, which really isn't going to be single family anymore.
Exactly. All right. Well, in the absence of any further questions or comments, I know it's a lot of work. Thank you for all your work on this. We appreciate it.
And we will have extensive outreach to the public. We intend to have a very first draft of housing zoning and regulations ready by about mid this year, and then we're going to launch a year-long process where people are provided the opportunity and a number of ways to give feedback. So we'll we'll bring that information to you. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you again, staff. That concludes staff and council members. That concludes the four items for discussion for tonight's study session agenda. The items tend to be scheduled for the next regular city council meeting are indicated in the packet of information, which of course will include the swearing in of our new council member appointed tonight. So we will now turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Poffield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. A handful of updates for you. Kind of segueing off where Ms. Spear was on the legislative front. So the session is still about five weeks out before they they adjourn. A kind of a next major threshold is the state legislature releasing their three budgets, their operating budget, their capital budget and their transportation budget. That's expected to occur at the end of this month. On the operations side, we are confident that our request in support of the Community Partnership Program over at Western State Hospital will be in there. Likewise, on the capital budget, a lot of members are hearing through are hearing from their respective leadership that projects aren't being considered. However, our folks have not heard that as it relates to our funding request for for Silicon Park and for Lhasa and the For Silicon Park being one in partnership with the Nisqually, the Nisqually Tribe. Couple of bills to kind of touch on the first is vehicular pursuits. I know the council's been following this very, very closely. There was a, on the House side, it was thirteen sixty three, and on the Senate side, fifty three fifty two. And you know, the long short of that is that it would increase the threshold for vehicular pursuits by police officers from probable cause to reasonable suspicion, which is something that we would definitely like to have, given the safety concerns and not just our community, but but statewide. However, it's the, both of those respective bills through their processes were also, I would just say, a little watered down in terms of that the use of reasonable suspicion can only be used in a handful of of situations. And really the situations that impacts Lakewood, like, for example, stolen vehicles and property crimes are not covered there. Unfortunately, House Bill thirteen sixty three on the House side did not make it out of the House. It died. However, the Senate stepped up to the plate. And their companion bill, even though it didn't have a public hearing, they reworked their rules. And it did pass out of the Senate. So that bill is now alive, fifty three fifty two. Again, there was a striking amendment to make it the same as sixteen thirteen sixty three, which is, again, can only be used under very limited circumstances. We have a work to develop an op ed. I know I passed out draft copies of it. Mayor, I get your feedback back. So thank you on that, that we would like to post in the Tacoma News Tribune. They're actually standing by and willing to do it. The genesis of that was actually a an analysis that came out of the Pierce County Audit Committee, which completely misrepresented Lakewood's data. They have admitted that the data is flawed. It's wrong. And we have subsequently provided them the updated data. However, the challenge is, is that report is being used on an Olympia as this is why we don't need any changes, which is contrary to what the data shows. So we're going to hit it from 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 two ends there. We're also looking to reach out to our state legislators, particularly in the twenty eighth district on the House side to, you know, when fifty, when fifty three fifty two comes over to the House, that of course they vote in favor of it, but more importantly, get it down on the floor for a vote, because they couldn't even do that last time. That wasn't able to happen. Blake Decision, there's a bill moving forward on that that would it's actually not a bad bill, other than it's a gross misdemeanor. It'd be nice if it was a felony. But it's a gross misdemeanor, creates a diversion program for individuals that are charged with possession. Again, earlier this evening, you heard about uses. So Blake is about possession. It would also impose minimum jail sanctions on defendants who are convicted of of possession. So it does have a bit of a carrot and a stick there. And that's something that 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 we're tracking. The other one that we're tracking very closely is the True Blood Decision regarding, you know, people getting proper treatment through the mental and behavioral health systems at the at the state level. The beauty of the bill that's been moving forward is that previous bills had kind of taken a harsh perspective on what cities had to do. So that has been subsequently removed and is not part of the bills moving forward. On the housing side, I just want to, you know, echo what Ms. Spear said, eleven ten. The good news is that eleven ten has morphed from what it previously was. So I would say it's maybe not as bad, but again, it's not a bill that I believe is commensurate with Lakewood and what our community is. And as you've heard me say before, a lot of the items that are included in that bill, you know, we allow within our code, but only under what our community standards are as opposed to this top-down carte blanche approach. Also, that bill is really not geared toward communities like Lakewood and many others. It's geared, what we're hearing, toward kind of Seattle and some cities on the east side and, you know, folks like that who are are not providing different housing options that Lakewood has and continues to do. We're going to testify in opposition of that bill on Friday and really focusing on three components. One is that infrastructure, you know, you know, most cities are not full-service cities, and we don't have control over water and sewer and electric and things like that. Also, GMA is set up to focus on development and density in our core urban areas. For example, we have two subarea plans. Also, again, this comes back to our respective community standards. You know, we're very focused on environmental protection and preservation. And two examples of that is our climate change work plan, as well as our tree preservation ordinance. And those all conflict with how eleven ten is right now. And so we just want to get on the record communicating that. That is probably going to create some backlash. Because, you know, a lot of cities, quite frankly, are afraid to, you know, publicly oppose this, or that's what we're hearing when we talk to other cities and we're down at AWC. But again, we want to continue to 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 work on this and again, communicate what our concerns are and 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 where where we are on that. The other is, this caught my attention, actually, right before the meeting, AWC sent out their weekly update, and the National League of Cities is sending, sending a letter to our federal delegation, and it has to do with rail safety. And this is an outcome of that tragic event that occurred, if I recall, in Ohio a couple of weeks ago. And a lot of similarities to our derailment issue in terms of safety and how the community was impacted and things like that. And I've taken a look at the letter, and my recommendation to this body is that we sign on it under the signature of the mayor. So unless there's any objection, I'd like to do that. I think our federal delegation would appreciate seeing Lakewood listed there, so we can get that, we can get that done. It can't be changed, though. The letter can't be. Also, wanted to report that the Pierce County Library Board of Trustees, they had their monthly meeting last last Wednesday. They did take action on a couple of things. One was to to approve a construction contract to move forward with constructing about a seventy five hundred square foot interim Lakewood Library that would be located at the intersection of Gravita Lake Drive and Alpharetta Street. Their goal is to be open by the end of the year. That's all going to depend on supply issues and things like that and dealing with some of their subcontractors, but that's their goal and their objective. The other action that they took is that the board provided direction to their staff to demolish the existing Lakewood Library at that's located on Wilder. Of course, we've been working with them on securing the Tenzler log, and so now they're going to be moving forward with essentially abating and 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 demolishing that. You know, the timeline is probably going to be about the same as one building's coming out of the ground, the other one will will come down. And so we're working with them from a development services standpoint on that. The Board of Trustees' next steps is going to be, okay, where do they want to build that permanent Lakewood Library? Do they want to build it at the current site or they want to build it someplace else? And we're hoping that they're going to make that decision here in the coming months, and they're looking at different options and alternatives there. As a follow-up, I think it was last study session, there was a presentation on the use of Pierce County's Behavioral Health Tax, and I think it had been mentioned in the meeting. They just issued their, released their RFP to accept applications for funding for the next two years. There's about twenty eight million dollars available. And so we're going to take a look at that RFP and see if there's an opportunity for the city of Lakewood to be able to apply any of those funds if it meets any of the criteria. It is a bit of a quick turnaround. It's about a four-week opening, and I think the deadline is Friday, April, Friday, April fourteenth. If you've been down to For Silicon Park, you'll notice that there's If you've been down at Forest Silicon Park, you'll notice that there's some new play equipment down there. It costs the city about thirty-seven thousand dollars. However, uh, the Rotary Club of Lakewood actually contributed eleven thousand dollars, so they want to come to a future meeting. We're looking at the first or second meeting in April and kind of present that big check to you, um, just to uh, ex-ex-express their appreciation. Um, also, as a follow-up to a recent city council meeting. We um, have reached out to the Lakewood Rotary Club, which is going to be taking the lead on the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And uh, so um, as you know, a five-on-one C-three is the agency that has to spearhead that, and so they're volunteered to do that. We have asked them to provide us, you know, essentially a pro forma of what they need in terms of funding. We expect to bring that back to you hopefully in the next month or so, if not sooner, quite frankly. Uh, we've also reached out to both the Global Park School District and the Library District to let them know that the Rotary Club will be contacting them. To see what level of involvement that they can 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 provide, particularly the school district and providing. Family contact names and addresses and things like that. Um, as well as to help with the marketing and the advertising, but really, the city's role there is going to be kind of the the major financer, if you will. Um, with your, with your ARPA funds. So more, more to come on on that. That that that's correct, Mayor. There's um, I I heard today three zip codes, but I think only two are, I think they're focusing on three, but only two are in Lakewood. So I think one might be on the edge, but they're focusing on three. Then um, lastly, just um, want to give you an update on the opioid lawsuit. So myself and the city attorney, we participated in a Zoom call that was um, sponsored by our county council member Jenny Hitchen last week. Um, she wanted to convene the signatories here in Pierce County to that. Um, settlement agreement, which is comprised of a number of cities in Pierce County about, hey, what are we all thinking? Um, long story short, uh, Lakewood, we communicated that this body has only really had one discussion and. Like to work it through our community collaboration and the number of human and social services agencies that. We partner with to get their feedback and input. Um, however, really, the the current priority is forming. That opioid abatement council and uh, the city attorney and one of her colleagues from the county. Um, was very clear in terms of what that committee is, which and also what it's not, and what it is. Is essentially a reporting and auditing organization as agencies determine how they want to spend their money. What it isn't is, okay, they're the ones who get to decide how the money is utilized, as well as. You know, the composition really needs to be comprised of the, of members of the signatory um, agencies. And so um, again, the city attorney is 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 working on that. Um, a lot of the conversation was around, you know, just getting feedback from cities in the county on how they want to maybe utilize the monies. Some of the smaller cities could forego the funding and maybe just kind of turn it over to the county or somebody else. Um, one is to spend it directly, including undertaking an RFP process. As well as maybe partnering on some regional purposes or a combination thereafter. Um, from Lakewood's perspective, you know, we left it open. We said again, our legislative body has only had one conversation about this, and. I'm not going to get out ahead of them, and uh, we're going to wait until um, the OAC is formed and. And then go from there, but certainly we're willing to come to the table and continue to have a conversation and a dialogue there. So uh, with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Any questions? Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, thank you, and I guess in in Mayor. You know, in part of your report that related to the legislation around pursuits. And we were shared with the the draft, the op-ed, that the, that that. The mayor authored or would go out under his signature, and I just had. Um, a couple of questions about how the op-ed fits in with how we're. Advocating in the legislature for some changes, and and for the most part, the changes we want is a. Either an elimination of the list of offenses or a more robust list of offenses, um, that 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 goes on. But um. The op-ed draft seems to stress that the Pierce County Audit. Used incomplete data from Lakewood that Lakewood provided. And it implies that we provided incomplete data, whereas my understanding was. Point honestly, that we provided the data and they misanalyzed it. Which is different than that we provided incomplete data, uh, in turn, and and that theme is there throughout that draft. And I'm just wondering if that's the right. Of course, is is that correct that we really provided incorrect data, or is that just a polite way of not. Saying they messed up analyzing it, which is what was what was what my understanding up to this point was.
Uh, Councilmember Brandstetter, actually, what we stated is, quote, used incomplete data from the Lakewood Police Department. This resulted in inaccurate findings. So that's what we have stated.
Okay, I'm just saying that wording implies that the department submitted incomplete data. Not that they didn't fully utilize the accurate data that we provided.
If you want a wordsmith, whatever, okay, I'll let you work that out, but again, the what what we have stated there is. Used incomplete data from the Lakewood Police Department that resulted in inaccurate findings.
And uh. In in any event, if we've. In this regard. What allies do we have uh, in either in Pierce County or around the state in terms of other municipalities and jurisdictions? That are willing to be as vocal as we need to be.
I want to get back to your first question, Councilmember Brandstetter, and really, the purpose of this op-ed is twofold. One is to. Um, you know, you know, communicate that 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 audit report is not accurate. As it relates to Lakewood's data, we can't say as it relates to the Pierce County Sheriff's Office, because that's not our, that's not ours. Um, and then secondly, to use this op-ed in our data to to convince our legislators. That they need to vote in favor of fifty-two fifty, uh, fifty-three fifty-two. However, that we support the original bill. Um, that does not include the watered-down version of just focusing on certain crimes, and the reason being is because. The crimes here in Lakewood that um, are missing from there are motor vehicle thefts and property crimes. That's, that's, that's what is creating this unsafe. Perspective that and feeling that our, that our community has. Um, and you know, in in terms of, in terms of allies, I I um. I don't, I don't. E-everybody seems to be going along to get along. I'll just, that's, that's my feeling right now as it relates to thirteen sixty-three. And the, and the, and the watered-down version, as I define it, that's not politically correct, but that's how I am. And then same thing with fifty-three fifty-two, that got watered down as well. And um, I think right now, we're probably the only agency, quite frankly, that is um, is stating that.
All right. Uh, however, I I I'm. I'm not happy to be the only agency, but I am proud to be one that is.
Wasn't there a common letter that went out? On this without Tacoma's signature?
Um, Councilmember Anderson, I believe you're referring to the prosecuting attorney's letter before the session. Um, she sent out a letter that I think just about every single city in Pierce County signed on to, essentially supporting. Um, thirteen sixty-three and fifty-three fifty-two as they were originally written.
And and my recollection was uh, all the mayors in the county executive signed it. Along with the prosecutor, except the city of Tacoma's mayor.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to make a hyperlink reference to the prosecutor's letter in this, if we can. Consistent with the requests of Pierce County Prosecutor Mary Robinette. As endorsed by most of the mayors of the county, so to that fact. Yeah. And that would be specific, wouldn't it?
I know, um, I I have recommended to the mayor that after the session, I think there would be some benefit and. Um, Lakewood, you know, I did this when I was in Stonehommish County, and Stonehommish County is still speaking as one voice, quite frankly, and. On this particular issue is a good example. And I think um, Lakewood could serve as the impetus to um, you know. Gather all the mayors and cities together after the session. Um, to talk about next session. Um, as it relates to, you know, one or two issues at the most, because it's just too much. But certainly, public safety would be at the top of the list, and that's certainly something that we could help facilitate. And I've already talked to our. Uh, governmental contractors about that, and they concur with that, too.
I think that makes good sense. Any other comments on the letter? If not, I think Mr. Coughfield gave us some time till Wednesday-ish. To make those suggested edits. Yep, that'd be great. Okay, thank you very much. Well, now we'll turn briefly to council comments, because we do have a closed session following the adjournment of this meeting. So Councilmember Bokey, have any thoughts?
Just, just an update on um, planning commission Wednesday night. Um. The the, they're getting the housing information, CDVG stuff. Um, this seems to be the big. Uh. PCC, that ad hoc committee I'm on, Transportation. We're meeting it on Wednesday. We're getting closer to making some recommendations. I think some. The last meeting last month, things became a little clearer as to the difference between the Pierce County's process. Seems to be a little bit more complicated than than like King County and some of the other surrounding counties. We kind of created this. Interesting scoring system that um. May maybe causing some of the issues that the other cities are having. Um, and then PCRC Wednesday night, I have on my, I don't have an agenda, but.
It's Thursday, isn't it?
Thursday night, excuse me, I have that written right there. So that's it.
Great, Councilmember Bell.
I am good, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Brandstetter. Mr. Anderson.
Uh, with respect to the RFP for behavioral tax use, uh. The county sent out, I'd suggest that we put in an application for money to fund. Treatment for drug court participants. Know from experience with the Veterans Court that the greatest barrier to successful participation is. People who are, who are uninsured and don't have access to the treatment. Drug court, Veterans Court works well because enough of those people are eligible for VA services that. That they can um, participate. Um. The second thing, from the fourth to the eighth, I was in District of Columbia and Arlington, Virginia. Participating the Association Defense Communities um. Board meetings and a national summit and had interfaced with various legislators and. Um, the uh, and military and Defense Department personnel with respect. In large part to trying to solve problems with the flow of funding for the Clear Zone, but also housing. Childcare and the like. Interesting, informative, and good contacts. Uh, would remind everybody that when House Bill thirteen sixty-three was stuck in committee. Uh, every House member in the twenty-eighth district and twenty-ninth district, all four of them. Voted against bringing it to the floor for a vote, so they all voted to kill it. Now, I have understood indirectly that a couple of those legislators, the ones from the twenty-eighths. Say they're supportive of a watered-down version, but they voted against it. The only way they can cure that is to affirmatively come out. And actively support it. And uh, you can't have it both ways. Um. I just note that when you look at equal outcomes in housing, Sylvia Union managed to do that. Everybody was assigned an apartment that they didn't get to choose and didn't get to own, and they all had equal bad outcomes. That's government planning, boy.
And they weren't very attractive.
If you've seen them, you know that.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Saw plenty of it in East Berlin. Yeah, pretty crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I attended the school board meeting this afternoon and this evening, and it went very well. The one thing I would say is that um, I shared that the art. Reveiling would be April first. A lot of questions came up about. What that is, so I'm sharing so you can have a conversation, because you will be asked. Instead of calling him a cheese cutter.
Cheese grater.
Cheese grater, they wanted to know what it was, and I I didn't elaborate at all. I just said that would be explaining. So. Anyway, that's all I have.
Very good. Well, I I know that I think the Arts Commission is working on. A flyer to talk about Mr. Fleming's vision and background that he brought to us when it was adopted, so. Well, we can do that. Okay, um, I had two Pierce Transit meetings back to back. One was a study session about all their construction going on in their Mobi. The mobilization yard and all the buildings and the millions and millions and millions of dollars are being spent on that. It's just unbelievable. On the different buildings that they're renovating or redoing over Pierce Transit. So the positive for us is there'll probably be a lot of sales tax flowing at some point. Um, they are also looking at going to ballot this November with their up to point nine. Uh, tenths of a percent on the sales tax to get them to the full amount that their. Staff is recommending. Exactly, yep, point six to point nine, so more to follow on that. They're trying to. Enhance the services that they provide throughout the region with scheduling increasing. Uh, over uh, the period starting here this month of March, so hopefully folks will enjoy the ride. Orca Lift was adopted. That is going to reduce the charge for certain adults of limited means to access public transit. That's now kind of part and parcel to what Pierce Transit does is the Orca Lift Program. And then I just want to remind you that the twenty-fourth Friday, next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, is the big Rotary event. We are going to be raising monies for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. I will also raise, you know, general funds for the investment in the community, including, uh, I think Rotary invested eleven thousand. Into Habitat for Humanity for the Dr. Claudia Thomas House. So good funds go to good purposes, so I'd love to have you there. That's all I have. Yes.
I have a neighbor that is interested in being a part of that. Is that we go through Rotary or can? I don't know what her intentions are, really. Dolly Parton, oh, Library.
Uh, certainly, she can contact uh, Bill Potter, Mary Horn, any of us in Rotary can help her steer her to the right direction.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. We are. Moving to a closed session, following adjournment of the meeting to. Discuss employment-related things on behalf of the city. So at this point.